Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting, Tuesday, February 9th, 6:00 PM via Zoom. The agenda is online with instructions on how to join the webinar. If you if you need help joining, or if you're on the phone and wish to join via webinar or call in, vice versa, the instructions are on the agenda. To comment during the meeting, there's instructions on the agenda, but what we ask is either notify us via the chat or email ConnorMurphy@BrainTreeMA.gov. And we'll be sure to keep tabs on that throughout the meeting and hopefully make sure that everyone who wants to speak tonight gets a chance when it's when it's time. Our first public hearing is not until 6:15, so as customary, we like to try to address some of our old new business at the bottom of the agenda. So we're going to jump down to the February zoning board of appeals recommendations. Connor, would you be able to, I think we have two applications that we're looking at this evening?
Madam Chair, if I may, just quickly, if you're not presenting right now, aside from the board members, please mute yourself. We have people that are on the tiles that are unmuted. So please make sure you're muted during the presentation. Obviously, the board members have dialogue and whatnot. I just wanted to announce that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think you I think you need to take attendance.
You're right, I do. All right. Member Joyce is here. Member Baker.
Here.
Member McCallum.
Here.
Member Downey.
Here.
Member Grove.
Yeah.
And member Kent.
Here.
All right. So I think that I think that's I think we can move on to the ZB recommendations.
And I have to recuse myself on 12 Nichols Road, the first application that's coming up.
Okay. All right, let's do that one first.
So, Madam Chair, I might have cut you off in the beginning, but did you want the plans screen shared?
Yeah, if you could just screen share the plan and just go over it briefly. And then note your recommendation.
Absolutely. 12 Nicholas Road petition 20-38 description demolish the existing one-story, single-family dwelling. It constructed two-story, single-family dwelling with a 1,958 square foot footprint. The applicant seeks to find and reconstruct the single-family dwelling on a non-conforming 8,900 square foot lot where 15,000 square feet is required. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the applicant reduce the overall size of the proposed, single-family dwelling to keep in line with the existing neighborhood. Just to kind of back up that recommendation, I'm not sure if members have looked at the site or are familiar with the area. This neighborhood is located behind the South Shore Plaza between Washington Street and Common Street. Historically, this neighborhood has been, single-family ranches, slab foundation and such, and the applicants proposing a two-story dwelling. There are avenues and options to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling while keeping in line with the existing neighborhood. Directly across the street and direct and a direct to butter, have single-story ranch houses. What they're proposing is going to kind of stick out. So part of this recommendation is to have the applicant reduce the size and scope of the dwelling to sort of match the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Connor. Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions?
I like staff's comments, that whole area, you know, I've seen a lot of additions and constructions over the past 10 years or so, and some of them have been quite large, as we've noted in the past, so I would support staff comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Downey, any comments or questions?
No, no comment, sorry.
Nope, that's all right. Member Grove, any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like Connor to make, I'd like to include the fact that unless he has different information. When a person voluntarily takes down a building, they lose all their pre-existing, non-conforming status. There's any construction ought to be within the footprint of the existing building.
Member Grove, that's not exactly true, and that's not typically how we practice.
Why isn't it exactly true, Connor?
Why? Because the setbacks aren't non-conforming, it's a non-conforming lot, sir, there. To give you a brief history of why this is before the zoning board appeals member Grove, when you go to add a second story to a dwelling, okay?
He's expanding the footprint. Right?
Right.
Can't do it. I'll send you it. There was a case law, I believe it was August versus Miller, that denied the extension of the non-conforming footprint for a voluntary demolition.
Okay.
If you'd like, you can run it up to.
This is, if that's what you want to recommend, sir, then then we can. I'm just, we can, that's something we can definitely do. If you want, if that's what you want, if that's your recommendation, if that's how you want to proceed.
Do you want to set this on the table for a couple of minutes? I'll send you a copy of that if I can find it.
Well, I think also to the, Connor, the recommendation was to consider a different footprint, right?
It's to shrink down the scope of the house, yes.
Yeah.
And I mean, they're, sorry to interrupt, continue, please.
Oh, I was just going to say, the lot itself is non-conforming, but the current house setbacks are are any of those non-conforming?
There's only one, it's the side yard setback, so to get back to my original point, they filed for a building permit and they received the building permit to construct a second-story addition. Okay, and through recent case law, when you start to take down one wall, it's considered a reconstruction. But the wall they took down is on the left-hand side setback, okay? So the building inspector flagged it as a reconstruction. However, there's still three walls still up and intact, and they're not moving those walls. And the second-story addition is within the required setbacks.
Okay, and then this is not a demolition?
In a way, it is, and in a way, it isn't.
Well, I mean, that that's what drove me down that road is because that's what you put in your documentation.
Sorry, Erin, you can.
Hold on, I just, it sound, yeah, it just, it was just, I think, just some clarifications coming out of the conversation, that's all, that's all.
If he's not increasing his non-conformity, then, you know, I'll retract my statement.
Okay. Okay.
Was there anything else, Member Grove?
No, ma'am.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
I would follow the staff's recommendation on this.
Okay, great, thank you. Connor, has there been any, there's been coordination with that easement that's running on the right side of the house, the sewer easement, is that why the building's proposed to step back a foot?
That, that into comply with zoning.
Okay. And so Water and Sewer reviewed that to make sure that that's appropriately out of their easement, right?
At this point, I haven't, I don't have any review from Water and Sewer.
Okay, maybe we can just add that to our recommendation or just make note of that.
Okay.
All right, so I think with that, Cheryl entertained a motion to move forward with staff recommendations for 12 Nichols Road.
I'll move staff recommendations for 12 Nichols Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Member McCallum, do I have a second?
Second from Downey.
All right, thank you, Member Downey. All right, so we'll do roll call vote. Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And Chair also votes yes. All right, that settles that one. Maybe we can get Member Baker back and Connor, can you?
Yep, I'll go to the next petition.
Thank you.
Okay, is Member Baker back? Yes, awesome, thank you. Yep. 36 Grove Circle petition 20-01, 21-01, my apologies. Description, construct a second-story addition to the non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks to find and construct the additional on the non-conforming rear yard setback of 16.1 feet where 30 feet is required. Staff recommends favorable action on on the application. Before us here, you can see the plot plan, they're simply just adding another story to this house. It's non-conforming with respect to the rear yard setback, 30 feet required. 16.1 is provided right there in the middle, right after the deck. Lot shoots back that way, and it's actually at a lower point than the lot to the left. Those are the comments I have at the time.
All right, Member Baker, any comments or questions?
No questions on my end, seems like a pretty simple second-story addition. You know, I was looking for relief just because they're existing, not conforming, so I'm okay with it.
All right, Member McCallum, any comments or questions?
The only one is, Connor, is the overhang, is that going to be part of the new addition?
No, it is not, sir. That's actually the part of the existing house.
Oh, okay.
It's going to, it's kind of, there's going to be some sort of, if you look at the main rectangle of the house, that's where the second-story addition is, and that's going to be remain the same.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, Member Downey, any comments or questions?
None.
Member Grove, any comments or questions?
I have a question, Connor.
Yes, sir.
Why isn't the setback measured with that?
I'm not too sure, sir.
Okay.
Because, oh, I can answer that because the proposed additions not going over the deck.
Right, well, that was the second question, okay, thank you.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Has there been any feedback from the abutters there at 10 Evergreen or 20 Evergreen expressing any concerns about, you know, privacy considerations or whatever of a second story?
So I did actually speak to the applicant today, this is kind of a work in progress. Unfortunately, I wasn't in the office, I was subject to quarantine when they filed. I'm still working on them with their plans, and one thing I did mention to the applicant was to seek a butter support, and especially butters me to the rear and to the sides, but they haven't provided any sort of support or comments yet.
Okay, thank you, Connor. I don't have any further comment or questions, so Cheryl entertained a motion on this application.
I'll move for, to support the staff favorable recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion by Member McCallum to move forward with staff recommendation on this application, do I have a second?
A second.
A second by, was that Member Baker?
Yes.
All right, Member Baker.
Yep.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Thank you, Connor.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have our first public hearing this evening scheduled for 6:15 is 175 and 185 Campanelli Drive. If you're modification, oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, if I may, we have an approval not required under old business, new business. There's not a public hearing. Ms. Mankuso is here with us. If at all possible, can we can we do that before we get into the hearings so that, I know she wants to be here all night, but so that she can she can leave the meeting.
Sure, saying I have no, I have no problem with that.
Thank you. So I'm going to be helping Fern out this evening. This is for 55 Solar Avenue and Fern's property that's in her family, her father-in-law and her husband. They bought a Land Court Paper Street, and they have gone through the process of abandoning that way and having people, anyone who had any rights in that way relinquish those rights. And they have a Land Court A and R plan that they've prepared by an apponset Valley survey that we have reviewed and verified the areas as well as the existing and proposed lot lines. We've prepared a staff report, and the staff is recommending that the plan be endorsed. The lot, once fully altered, will have 175 feet of frontage, so obviously meeting the minimum frontage requirements and entitled to endorsement.
All right, thank you very much. Just going to open it up to questions from the board. If anybody has any questions regarding this application, Member Baker?
No questions, it's just, this is the the kind of portion of their lot that has, I'm looking at like an overall Google viewer, has like kind of like the parking lot kind of is.
Yeah, yes.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, no real questions, that's fine.
Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions?
So, Melissa, this just becomes part of their lot then, and the paper paper road is totally eliminated and can't be built on. So we're just, we're just kind of redrawing the lot lines.
Actually, they they have, they they have improved that portion, and they've been using it for quite some time. So it doesn't necessarily restrict building on it. It's part of their lot, and as long as they meet the setbacks, they can expand their house or put a shed, that's not their intentions. Ms. Mankuso is here, if you have specific questions for her, but this essentially is an exercise to clean up what what her family has in fact been been using for quite some time. There is no purpose to construct this street, there's no lots that would benefit from frontage on it. It's sort of a mid-block street that goes from Solar to, I believe, Lake Street is is the next street. So the lots that, all the lots that abut it have compliant frontage either on Solar Ave or on Lake Street.
Okay, thank you, I'm all set.
Member Downey, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I have none, thank you.
Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
Ma'am.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
Nope, none here.
All right, I don't have any other further comment or questions, so Melissa, do we just need a motion to to endorse the A and R?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, all right, so if anybody has any other further questions, I'll entertain a motion for endorsement if if someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make a motion for endorsement for the approval not required subdivision plan for 55 Solar Avenue.
Great, thank you. Motion by Member Baker, do we have a second?
Second.
Member McCallum seconds, roll call vote, Member Baker.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And myself votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll follow up with you, Fern, about the paperwork.
Okay, awesome, thank you all. All right, so jumping back to the public hearing, such public hearing section of our meeting, 6:15, we have our first scheduled public hearing. First on the agenda is 175 and 185 Campanelli Drive, major modification decision number 19-02 AGEIP 175 Campanelli LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, would you like to read the notice, or would you like me to read it?
Could you please read the notice?
Yep, and for for those here with us this evening, Attorney Marinelli has requested this matter be continued without testimony. We're working through some town department comments, and we can get to the continuance after I read the notice. Town of Braintree Planning Board Public Hearing Notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 12, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 16, 6:15 PM. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, as amended, said order suspended the provisions of the Open Meeting Law to promote public health and social distancing. The public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing will be achieved by adequate alternate means that allow the public to follow the proceedings in a communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. We then have the Zoom information and legal notice. Then we state the Planning Board will consider an application to modify special permit and site plan review decision 1902 by the applicant AGEIP 175 Campanelli LLC. The applicant seeking permission to undertake site improvements associated with loading, circulation, access, drainage, landscaping, and parking. The property is 24.3 acres, has an address of 175 and 185 Campanelli Drive, is zoned commercial within the floodplain and watershed overlay protection district, and as identified on assessors Plan 1034 as plots 1 and 2.
Thank you. So the applicant has requested a continuance, so we just need to vote to continue, correct?
Correct.
When is the date of the next meeting?
The next meeting is March 9th.
All right, so Cheryl entertained a motion to continue this application to the March 9th meeting at 6:15.
So moved by Downey.
Great, thank you, Member Downey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Baker, Member Baker.
Yep.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. The the next, is there any, is there, Melissa, is there a preference to the order of the next two?
I don't have a preference, Madam Chair, whatever you'd like to do is totally fine with me.
All right, I'll keep going in order. The next public hearing is for 345 Grove Street, Planning Board File 21-01, Special Permit and Site Plan Review for Linden Corporation, the applicant. If we could have staff read into the record the public notice, that would be great.
One second, Madam Chair. Notice is given by the Braintree Planning Board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 12, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 6:15 PM. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, as amended, said order suspended the provisions of the Open Meeting Law to promote public health and social distancing. This public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing will be achieved by adequate alternate means that allow the public to follow the proceedings in a communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. Let me insert the Zoom information into the legal notice. The notice then continues to say the Planning Board will consider a use and buffer special permit and site plan review from the applicant Linden Corp. The applicant is proposing to construct a 1,550 plus or minus square foot car wash building with exterior features along with associated parking, utilities, circulation, lighting, and landscaping improvements. The site is 49,718 square feet, has an address of 345 Grove Street, is owned general business, and is identified on assessors Plan 1105 as plot 12.
Great, thank you very much. This is just a reminder to those who may be listening in for this application that if you, you know, have any comments or questions, please use the chat feature, or I believe if you're on your telephone, you can dial star nine. You can also email questions over to Connor Murphy, CRMurphy@BrainTreeMA.gov. So we will be monitoring, monitoring that. With that said, if I could just ask staff for an update before we ask the applicant to speak, it's kind of an overall update of what has been going on just behind the scenes from the town's perspective, like where the applicant is at.
I would love to. Madam Chair, I can just give a brief update, I was just looking here to see if we had District 5 Councilor Barico with us this evening. I had shared with the board in the applicant, there was a neighborhood meeting conducted at the end of January, I believe it was January 27th, and Councilor Barico provided for the Planning Board and staff a very nice detailed memo that sort of highlighted what happened at that meeting, what was discussed, and sort of the major, major takeaways from that meeting. So just highlighting that document, I've prepared a staff report that was circulated this afternoon. We have met with the applicant several times prior to their actual submission. As noted in the staff report, there are some ongoing concerns primarily with circulation and congestion and stacking, and really trying to determine whether or not this location is appropriate for this development. So I'll hold off any further comments. I would, I would like to hear, obviously, the presentation and really interested in hearing from the board members and the public this evening.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, with that, I don't know who from the applicant's side is going to take the lead. All right. Step on up.
Great, thank you, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry Crimmens with Platinum Partners with an address of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Leiden Corporation, who is represented tonight by Ms. Olga Ledenko, who is the Secretary of Leiden Corporation. The other members of the project team, if I may, Madam Chairperson, just to introduce them, that may be addressing the board tonight. Our project engineer is Mr. Brad McKenzie of the McKenzie Engineering Group, also his associate, Mr. Eric Shoemaker, as well as our traffic engineer, Mr. Ron Mueller of Ron Mueller and Associates, and my partner with Platinum Partners, Ms. Norino Tool. This is an application, Madam Chairperson, members of the Planning Board to, for a special permit to construct a two-bay car wash at the location 345 Grove Street at the corner of Liberty Street. The site is a combination of a general business zone piece that's at the corner where the car wash would be located. The site also includes a residential piece that runs along Grove Street, but that that piece is not part of the application for the proposed car wash, although that that piece came into play as far as the notice of intent that was filed with the Conservation Commission. From a procedural standpoint, we were last before the Concom last week on on this matter, as far as the notice of intent is concerned. That hearing was continued to our, to the next meeting on March 4th. And Brad can address procedurally where that is at, as far as any matters that may pertain to to this hearing tonight. But I just want to give the board a sense of where we are. But I just want to give the board a sense of where we are at procedurally, as far as any other permits are concerned. So the Concom hearing is ongoing, and again, we are scheduled to be back before them on March 4. Again, this is the redevelopment of a, of a commercial site that most recently had a bank kiosk, an ATM kiosk on it that previously belonged to Braintree Cooperative Bank. This, the history of the site goes back to the 1930s and into the late 1950s when it was used as a gas station. And then after the 1950s, it was used by, by several different automotive glass entities, right, right up until the 1990s, when at that time, back in 1998, actually, this board granted a special permit to Braintree Cooperative Bank for its use of the site for the ATM kiosk. We are looking again to construct a two bay car wash on the site. The word car wash, I don't think really does it justice. That obviously is, is the, is the proposed use, but I'd like it in a, in a little bit to give Ms. Ladancko an opportunity to give the board an overview about what the laser car wash facility is really about. She and her husband operate another laser car wash facility in the town of Whitman at a location very similar to this location. It's a condo lot at the corner of Roots 18 and 27 in Whitman, has very similar site issues that this site does. And so she, she's experienced not only with the operation of the car wash and what goes into that, but specifically with a location, again, very similar to this location. I've mentioned the permits, there is both the special permit and the application for site plan approval. That's before this board tonight. There are also two waivers that we have requested relative to landscaping in, in the buffer zone. The, the corner of Grove and Liberty, the Grove Street area there is in the Mass DOT right of way. So, so they have some existing landscaping that we will need to coordinate with them between the landscaping that we're proposing on our site, as well as the landscaping that would be within the Mass DOT right of way. The other waiver relates to the, if you're facing a site from Liberty Street, where the site abuts the residential properties along Liberty Street that we requested a waiver relative to the 10-foot buffer on that side. With that, Madam Chairperson, I think I did, the director mentioned the public outreach that we had that was facilitated by the Council for the District that was held on January 27. That was very well attended, actually, and we got some very good comments from the Abudders and the neighbors. I, I trust some of which are on tonight's meeting as well. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Brad McKenzie from the McKenzie Engineering Group to talk about the site plan and the site improvements. Brad?
Thanks, Barry. I'm actually going to have Eric from our office talk about the site plans. And I'm available to discuss any questions that the board may have relative to where we are, what discussions we've had in conservation after that.
Good evening, everyone. Do you mind if I screen share and walk us through the site plans?
I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
So hopefully everyone can see this. As Barry mentioned, the site is located at 345 Grove Street in Braintree. Consists of 1.14 acres and is directly adjacent to the signalized intersection of Grove Street and Liberty Street to the northeast. So the site was previously used as a bank kiosk and it's now vacant. The old pavement for that use is all that remains. The majority of this site is comprised of undeveloped woodland and wetlands located within that residential B zoning district, while the developed portion of the site is located in the general business zoning district. So the site is also bordered by developed residential properties to the southwest and developed commercial properties to the east, as well as the northwest. The topography ranges from elevation 153 at the eastern property line adjacent to the driveway over here at Liberty Street, down to about 141 to 133, where it borders the vegetated wetlands. So as, as the site is currently constituted, there are no stormwater controls and all the runoff basically flows untreated onto Grove Street where it's captured by the municipal drain system. And eventually it discharges behind that shopping plaza north of the site. So the bordering vegetated wetlands, just to mention throughout the site, were flagged by Environmental Consulting Restoration LLC on August 4, 2020. Moving on to our site plan. This is what we propose with the site. This plan just shows some of the surface treatments, as well as what, what we want to do in this area. So we're proposing a one-story two-bay car wash totaling to about 1,500 square feet. As you can see from the land usage tables, we're complying with all the dimensional requirements in that general business zoning district found in the Braintree zoning bylaws. So this plan shows some of the infrastructure looks located outside of the building, as well as the surface treatments. We have some permeable pavers down here, cement concrete pads directly adjacent to the entrance and exit of, of the bays, as well as Batumus concrete pavement for the parking area, as well as the aisles. So additional improvements to the site include that Batumus concrete parking area, some landscaping, utility connections, and stormwater management facilities. So the building and a portion of the site are located within that 100-foot buffer to the bordering vegetated wetlands. We've had a series of meetings and discussions with the Conservation Commission. And after a few revisions to this plan, we got all of the pavement located outside of that 25-foot buffer to the bordering vegetated wetlands. So this, the location of that building was chosen to be as distant as possible from the wetlands while still maintaining the setbacks, as well as the aisle widths and vehicle queuing required for this use. Moving on to our grading and drainage plan. As I mentioned earlier, there are currently no stormwater controls in the site, and our goal was to design a drainage system that complied with all of the local and state stormwater management regulations, as well as bring the site into compliance. So we analyzed the watershed area of approximately a third of an acre consisting of the subject parcel to be developed within the limit of work. And our design takes into account three design points. The southern property line, Grove Street right of way, as well as the bordering vegetated wetlands. And our design pretty much captures all of the impervious runoff from the site with a catch basin, where it's then conveyed to a first defense unit treated for TSS or suspended solids removal, as well as to achieve the water quality required. And then from there, the water is conveyed into a subsurface infiltration system under the parking lot in this area where it fully infiltrates into the native soils. So that subsurface infiltration system was designed to accommodate the peak rates of flow for the two, the 10-year, the 25-year, and the 100-year storm events. Moving on to our utility plan. Straightforward, our utility plan shows some utility connections on both Liberty Street and Grove Street. We're proposing connections to water, gas, electric on Liberty Street, and there'll be a sewer connection on Grove Street with proposed sediment and oil separator, as well as gas traps. So it's my understanding that this car wash will not reuse any water to service the vehicles, and any excess waste will be serviced by that oil and sediment tank before entering the municipal sewer system. We've met with the DPW, we've had conversations with that department to get inputs on all, all the sizes and connections shown on this plan to be in compliance with all the town regulations. We'll discuss the landscaping plan real quick. So this, this landscaping plan was a result of some preliminary discussions with Melissa, as well as the staff of the Conservation Commission. So basically, we'll be replanting some of the arborvitae along the southern property line, as well as cleaning up the invasive species that currently exist within that wetland buffer. We'll also be providing landscaping per this table along the front of the site, as well as working with Mass DOT to provide some plantings and really bring up the look, look in the field of, of this site with respect to the landscaping. Another thing worth mentioning is, is the dumpster in this area down here. That will be properly screened with white vinyl fence, as well as the associated landscaping. So that concludes the civil site, site plans. I'll hand it back off to Barry, and we'll be here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Eric. Madam Chairperson, if I may, if I could introduce our traffic engineer, Mr. Ron Mueller, so that Ron can address a few of the traffic issues.
Thank you, Barry. For the record, my name is Ron Mueller, registered professional traffic engineer in the Commonwealth and principal with Ron Mueller and Associates. We prepared a traffic assessment for this project, basically to document how much traffic is going to be generated, where that traffic will go, and then make recommendations regarding site circulation and access. As I'll explain a little bit, we did not do a full traffic impact and access study because this project doesn't come even close to meeting the volume thresholds that would require such a study. Regarding site circulation, my initial, the initial proposal for the site was to have traffic circulate around the site in the same fashion that the ATM used to, with access from Grove Street and exit onto Liberty Street. There, very early on, I recommended to the team that we change that circulation and have all traffic enter from Liberty Street and exit out onto Grove Street. And the specific reasons for that are, if you have, if you allowed traffic to enter from Grove Street, anybody who wants to make a left turn into the site would be waiting for the queue of cars that almost, you know, certainly during peak hours extends past, well past this driveway. So if you have somebody sitting there waiting to make a left turn, they, they're waiting until that queue clears from the signal before they can make that turn. And they're waiting in an area where traffic right now on Grove Street westbound is merging from two lanes back to one. So in my view, that is a very dangerous situation that we try to avoid at all cost. And the way to do that is to simply reverse that circulation. Having access from Liberty Street, because it's on the other side of the road, you never have a queue of cars waiting in front of that Liberty Street driveway. So it makes all the sense in the world to change that circulation from, to, to allow a much safer operation, in my view. So the traffic that we expect from this project is, as Barry Crimmens noted earlier, the applicant is currently operates an existing almost identical laser car wash facility in Whitman. And they have provided us with transaction data for a whole year worth of data pre-COVID to show how many transactions occurred during every hour of the day, like I said, for the entire year. And translating each transaction into one car tells us that on an average day, this facility will generate between six to 10 peak hour trips. That's total of both entering and exiting traffic during the peak hours. The morning, one hour between seven and nine in the morning, and the evening, the rush hour, one hour between four and six in the afternoon. On a Saturday, which is typically the busiest days for car washes, we expect about 16 peak hour trips, so eight entering and eight exiting. We all know car washes can have widely varying traffic generation depending on the weather. And most notably in the winter months after a snowstorm is when the heaviest operations usually occur. So we also looked at the peak day, and what that told us is that on a peak weekday, somewhere between 24 and 30 peak hour trips would be generated during those same hours. Again, that's total of both entering and exiting. The peak days, based on what we, based on the transaction data that we found, typically occur only about five to seven days a year. But again, that is sort of weather dependent. I mentioned before that this project doesn't exceed Braintree's regulations that require a full traffic study. Those regulations say that a, a project has to generate at least 50 trips during an hour. So clearly, this project is well below that threshold, and the reason why we prepared the assessment as opposed to a full impact study. So even, one of, one of the other things I want to mention is the, most of the, most of the traffic that this project generates will already be on the adjacent streets and will not be new to the area. There will be some people who make a special trip to a car wash to get their car washed, but most people that visit car washes, I suspect, are people that are driving by and will use the car wash on their way to another destination. So in reality, most of this traffic will not be new. But even if we assumed all of that traffic to be new, once we distribute that traffic onto Grove Street and onto Liberty Street, on an average day, there will only be two to four additional cars per hour, where on a peak day, it would be about six to eight additional cars. So clearly, this project is not a high-traffic generator and will not have an impact on the adjacent streets. With also one comparison. As Barry mentioned, the site was formerly occupied by an ATM use, ATM kiosk. I have done counts at seven existing ATM locations throughout Massachusetts for both Friday peak times and Saturday peak times. And what I've found, obviously, we can't count the ATM that was, was there because it's no longer there, but based on these counts that I've done at other locations, an ATM generates about 12 trips during the weekday peak hour and 16 trips during the Saturday peak hour. These numbers are almost identical to what we expect the car wash to do on an average day. So from a comparison to what existed on the site previously to what is now being proposed, it is almost identical from a traffic generation perspective, barring obviously the peak days. With regard to queuing, what the site plan shows is you can queue a total of eight cars on the site. One in each car wash bay, and then three cars behind the car wash bay before, before that queue would spill over into Liberty Street. So then the question is, how much of a queue can we expect? Well, and Ms. Ladancko will explain to you in a little bit, the operations of the car wash. But each car wash cycle, depending on the options you select, will take anywhere from five to six minutes per wash. So even if you take the longest cycle and everybody picks the longest cycle, you can theoretically process about 20 cars in an hour. Well, with a site generation of only three to eight cars entering the site during the peak hours, clearly, those cars can easily be accommodated onsite with minimal of any queuing. On a peak day, where we have between 12 and 15 cars entering the site, we get closer to that 20 capacity, 20-car capacity that the site can process. And because obviously traffic doesn't enter the site uniformly throughout the hour, there may be And because obviously traffic doesn't enter the site uniformly throughout the hour, there may be. Several cars that arrive all at the same time. What I've recommended to the applicant and they have agreed to do is if. On those peak days that an attendant be onsite. Who monitors the queue. And if that queue ever does reach back to Liberty Street, in other words, if you have more than three cars waiting in each bay. That the entrance on Liberty Street be coned off to not allow any further cars into the site. Until that queue dissipates and they can process more cars. Based on the numbers that we're projecting in the queue storage that we have, I don't suspect that is a situation that will occur. And certainly not very frequently, but it does provide an extra level of safety. So with regard to the recommendations of my study. We've talked this through with your planning staff as well. That the exit onto Grove Street, we recommend that it be narrowed down to about 19 feet. To make sure that it is used as an exit only. That we add pavement striping and signage to make sure that it is used as. An exit only with do not enter signs facing Grove Street. Stop sign on the, and stop line on the exit. And that we also add, and this was a recommendation of planning staff. A no left turn sign. Exiting out during weekday peak hours from four to six in the afternoon. That is something we will have to obviously. Get agreement with from Mass DOT on all of these changes. Grove Street, as I was mentioning, is a state highway. And we will be making an application to DOT. For. For the curb cut. As part of that application with DOT, we will also petition the state to allow us to put landscaping. On their property at the corner of Grove and Liberty Street and. We've spoken with DOT, we've been in contact with them. That is something that they will certainly entertain. They will review our application and landscaping plan. And they will also require the applicant to enter into a maintenance agreement with DOT. For the applicant to maintain that landscaping into the future. Part of the curb cut changes on Grove Street also require us to extend the existing sidewalk then to meet that new curb line and put in ADA compliant ramps. Oh yeah, and then we also recommend that. Some of the existing vegetation that's along Grove Street to the. Northwest of that driveway be trimmed back to maximize sightlines in that area. And as I mentioned before, that an attendant be present during peak days to monitor the driveway and assure that queues do not block. Or exit on. Spill over into Liberty Street. That, that is it for my presentation, I believe, or Barry, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ron. Madam Chairperson, if I may, I just, we just have one more section of our. Sort of formal presentation to the board for this evening and it would be from Ms. Olga Lidenko. Who is the owner operator of the car wash. As I mentioned, Ms. Lidenko. Runs with her husband a very similar car wash in the town of Whitman at the intersection of Routes 18 and 27. So she has a great deal of experience with not only running a car wash, but also at, at a very similar location. But I'd also like her to, in addition to talking a little bit about her background and experience in the car wash business. To talk a little bit about what makes laser car wash different and kind of sets it apart from what I think most of us typically think about. As, as a car wash, particularly those that we, we grew up with several years ago. So if, if I may at this time, I'd like to call upon Ms. Lidenko. To, to address the board briefly.
Good afternoon, my name is Olga Lidenko. I represent the applicant Lidenko. And as Barry mentions, my husband and I have been operating. A very similar, almost identical car wash in Whitman since 2017. We built it there. And we have been operating it since. And when somebody says car wash, unfortunately, the preconceived notion doesn't really do justice to the project we're proposing. So maybe let me start with sharing a picture to just visualize for you. How the laser car wash would look like. This is the rendering that has been prepared. For us. I hope you can see my screen. Okay, perfect. So. What we are proposing, the building that you see on the picture is the exact copy of the building that we have in Whitman. It's worth mentioning, we're a family operation. We're not a large corporation. It's my husband and I. Running it, which I think has a certain amount of benefits that it brings to the community and the. Cleanliness, the focus on service, the focus on excellence of this operation. Let me start off with talking about the equipment because that's probably one of the most significant differentiators. Of the operation we're proposing. The equipments we're proposing to install is designed and manufactured in the United States. It is the top premium brands on the markets. For those of you who may be familiar with it, the name of the brand is PDQ. It is a fully computerized equipment with many sensors. Kind of a robot, it's more of a robotics really equipment rather than anything else. So the arm that goes around your car. And make sure that. It applies water and soap. One of the bays is going to be touch free, so nothing touches the car. The other bay would be pro-touch. The soft foam fabric and new generation of the fabric. That helps remove the extra dirt and make sure that the car is exceptionally clean. Many of our customers provide us with exceptional references. They have been very happy with the service. In fact, we have some customers coming to Whitman from Braintree. The equipment is very efficient. Like I said, it's high quality, many with preference it as a catalog of the car wash equipments. So it's very efficient since it's a latest technology, the. Water consumption is efficient depending on the cycle. And depending on the package and the size of the car really, the water consumed is ranging between 20 to. 40 gallons per one wash. The cycle is relatively fast. Four to six minutes on average per cycle, again, depending on the. Package chosen and the size of the vehicle. We serve the vehicle size in size of up to seven feet high and up to 22 feet long. So you can tell that's, that's a pretty significant. Sizable vehicles that can be cleansed by the facility. In terms of how we operate and what we are proposing, again, I want to stress that this is a family business, so every customer's importance. Every call that comes through is important. We always answer the call. Would it be? A business day or the weekends, morning or late at night? The hours of operation proposed would be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM Mondays through Saturday. And 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday. During the nights, all the machinery and lights would be dimmed or shut down and all the doors would be closed. It's important for us to know what is happening on the side at every given point of time, so we have. 24/7 video surveillance on the sites and we make sure to check it on a very regular basis. The cleanliness is one of the aspects that I, that I know is of a concern generally when anybody talks about the car wash. So I can assure you that the operation we're running in Whitman and Braintree would be no different, will be meticulously cleaned. The attendants on sites will be providing the cleaning three times a day at the very least. That's just a normal schedule and during the busy days, the attendant would be there all the time. So morning during the opening hours, cleaning, the afternoon cleaning, including inside and outside. And then when we close up, the attendants make sure it's clean as well. The, this type of a car wash is fully automated, completely self-sufficient. That's just a new modern business model. Which is why the attendance is not required on the site. However, as Ron mentioned, we do recognize that. To run a good operation, we will have to have the attendants. There full time during the busy hours and the busy days, so that's definitely the commitment we're prepared to make. The attendant will also provide the traffic management in case there are any issues. With the queuing and whatnot. Coming on you as a new business to the Braintree community, we do want to make sure we are a good supportive member. For the community, so we will be offering a number of complimentary packages for the town, for the fire department. For the police departments. We will make sure that we support local businesses by any means we can by consuming the essential services. The attendants that will be supervising this operation. We will be local to Braintree as well to make sure that they are in the area and can be. At the facility as a matter of minutes. We do understand that it's important, privacy of our neighbor is important. And we heard a couple of concerns about the noise during, during the neighborhood meeting as well. As during the meeting with Melissa. So we completed the noise study, which. The formal noise study outcomes will be shared separately. I'm happy to report that with the fans on the property line, the noise. Numbers are well below the required thresholds. So the operation will be sort of neighbor friendly from that standpoint. From the visual appeal, we tried to. Take good care of suggesting a good amount of landscaping, so hopefully you will notice a significant difference. Between. What you see even on this picture and how the site looks right now. It's important for us to do the construction well, taken some of the known history of the sites. We will make sure that all the construction is supervised by the licensed LSP. And we definitely will stick to all of the recommendations to make sure we're compliant with all the current regulations. And with that, I will be happy to answer any additional questions you may have about. How we operate in Whitman and how we propose to operate in Braintree.
Great, thanks, Olga. Madam Chairperson, that, that completes our formal presentation to the board. As Olga mentioned. We're all available to answer any questions that you or your colleagues on the board may have or that any of the members of the public who may be present may have.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, um. All right, um, is my audio okay or am I like, am I pausing?
You're pausing, Madam Chair.
I don't know why I'm pausing. All right, um. Maybe what we can do is we'll keep an eye on the public comment. If anybody has any comments. Please enter them into the chat or raise your hand and I think we'll start with the board and we'll just keep track of the public comment. And I'll see if I can improve my connection here. Member Baker, comments, questions?
Not too much comments. I'm happy to see the site potentially being revitalized. It's been kind of dilapidated for. A number of years. I grew up in the Highlands. I, I drove by this a number of days and it's been, it's been like this for, for a while now with the empty. Kiosk, it's now gone, so. But the biggest thing for me is I understand that, you know, there, there might be some traffic issues, but I, I do understand the fact that. Most of the traffic you would think would be coming from people who are already passing by potentially. So that, that is something that, you know, I'm taking consideration. The biggest thing is, I, I guess, to have the one way. Was it dead set in the one way? Was there any opportunity or even thought about of doing a? A split bay where you have one bay coming in one side and one bay coming the opposite side, or was it always? Looking at it from Liberty coming in and entering off or coming off from Grove. I was just curious of the kind of think, think around of, of the different options of how to kind of utilize the, the car wash itself. It's always nice to have, you know, greenery on your rendering. Just want to point a clarification just to add in that. That garbage bin or disposal you have in the front left and with the screening just for the rendering, just kind of show how that would probably tie into that corner. Since that's where the dumpster is going to be relayed. And that's another question too with the, the current rendering. I'm not sure what the shrubbery or the, the plantings would be like, but. Is it going to be low like that? So you can see the signage? Are you, are you preference to be something that's a little taller, a four or five foot tall? I'm not really sure, I guess, what works best for you. Obviously you don't want to probably block. You know, the view of everything, but I didn't know for the corner. And I'm not sure what the other development across the street that might be approved. Down the road, whatever they're doing or what, what they're thinking about for, you know, the sort of greenery as well, so. Just things to consider. Obviously, you know, taking into consideration the budding neighbor, the rear budding neighbor is probably the most impacted. I see you have like a six foot fence up. You know, it could be something, I think you might have it stepped with like a retaining wall and the fence on top. So that, that's always great just to kind of give that extra threshold of, of a space for. A direct to buttery, even the six foot fence is great, but if you get to be 10 or 11 with a six foot fence with a four foot wall, however that works out. I haven't been on the site in a while, so I'm not sure if there's any. Topography change or anything in that area or is it pretty flat? But as I said, it's, the biggest thing would just be, I'm kind of curious of the thoughts of the one way. Of what kind was studied exactly, and then if there wasn't any consideration of doing a, like a, a split bay, we have one bay entering in from Liberty. And another bay entering in from Grove where they're kind of actually doing two opposite queues, just so you're not having all the cars concrete in one side. Potentially, I, you know, Liberty is pretty heavily traversed. So, you know, it could be an attendant out. I know during the peak hours, obviously that's the highest time, but. You know, having someone on staff, they might constantly be running out on a Saturday to block traffic for. Maybe 10 minutes, because if you're looking at a four person queue, that the last person in line is almost waiting 20 minutes or maybe 15 minutes, so that's. decent amount of time to, to wait for a car wash. Just things to consider if you, for the long term of, you know, car stacking and things and entering and exiting and, and so on and so forth, so.
Madam Chairperson, do you want us to respond to member Baker's questions?
Um, yeah, I guess if you have, if you have any, any feedback on that possibly with, with regards to some of the bigger picture. A member Baker would like feedback on specifically, yeah.
Sure, great. Thank you. I, I think I'd call on, on Ron Mueller to address the, the circulation issues and. And, and what we did look at, which, which were several different models before arriving at this one, then perhaps when Ron is done, I think either Brad or Eric. Could pull up the, the colored landscape plan that I think hopefully will answer those questions. So Ron, can you address the, the circulation questions?
Yeah, with regard to having one bay operate one way and the other, the opposite way. If we did that, it wouldn't solve the problem why we wanted the Grove Street driveway to be an exit only. We'd still have the, we'd still have cars that are making a left turn from Grove Street into the site. Sitting there waiting for the queue from the light to clear. And meanwhile being worried about getting rear ended or sideswiped in that merge area from two lanes down to one. So that's really the sole and primary reason why we recommended the circulation the way it is.
Okay. Then Brad, do you have the colored landscape plan that you can share?
I do, I can screen share this if I'm allowed.
I do. I can screen share this if I'm allowed.
Now, are you able to blow that up at all, Bren?
Can you see the plan?
Yeah. Can you enlarge it at all?
I'm not sure.
Okay, if, if not.
I, I really can't.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's good.
Let me see. Hold on. That might be better. So, Member Baker, your question was, I think one of your questions was, you see my cursor?
Yep.
Okay. What is proposed for trees or shrubs or plantings around a sign? I think they're just low-lying hydrangeas so as to not make the sign so the sign can be seen from the, from the corner, the streets. The dumpster location is here. There are some winter berries proposed here and again, some, some hollies in the edge. We're going to revisit the location of the dumpster. I think one of the staff's comments was that it, it did encroach slightly into the 10-foot offer. So we're going to be doing that. In connection with that, we're going to be looking again at screening. But there is a six-foot-high vinyl fence proposed to be placed around that dumpster location there. The question about the fence, right now, this plan has an eight-foot-high white vinyl fence proposed along the property line. Olga had mentioned the noise study that has just been completed, that the board has not seen or staff has not seen. And that, my understanding is that, that there will be a relocation of that fence to be closer to the building that, that will serve to better mitigate the noise. And we're going to be taking a closer look at this whole area here, including the need for the parking space within the 10-foot offer. That's one of this, that's a special permit that was actually asked for, that Barry had mentioned in his presentation. So we're going to be, we're going to be looking again at a redesign of this area, walls in connection with a higher fence, perhaps a 10-foot-high fence to mitigate the noise. So this, this area of the plan will definitely change. There is a difference, the question about topography in this area, there's probably a, a four to six-foot difference between the existing, the existing grade and the proposed grade of the car wash are about the same. But the difference between the proposed grade and the existing grade here is probably around five or six feet. So in order to mitigate the noise, we have to take that into consideration. So a, a combination, again, a redesign of the walls and fences in this area will need to be accomplished. I think that was the extent of the questions relating from Mr. Member Baker.
So just for clarification, that left-hand corner is, is the, I can't really read the exact grades. Is the grade sloping up towards the building or is it sloping down towards the neighbor at the Abraham neighbor?
Yeah, down towards the Abraham property.
Okay, got it. And, and Melissa, is there any restriction for, for fences in Braintree six-foot tall? Or versus eight-foot tall? Or is there any restriction with that for a building permit?
Um, I believe there is, Member Baker. I think six feet is the maximum. Um, eight and 10 start getting into, you know, spite fences and things like that. As mentioned by Mr. McKenzie, you know, this is something that I flagged in the staff report as well. And I think there's an opportunity to, to take another look at this area. Mr. Crimmins mentioned it a few times as a waiver to use this area. It's, it's not a waiver. It's, it's actually a special permit. So in order for them to put in that parking space, number one, and the wall and alter that area, they actually need a special permit. I'm, I'm not supporting that special permit at this time. Again, there is a residential structure there. The wall, wall is shown as about three or four feet on the property line. And respectfully, that's just really, really, really close. So I look forward to some revisions to this area.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's my biggest thing is when you're re-looking at this, the overall scope, just, you know, make sure they're taking consideration potentially a six-foot fence and maybe some sort of retaining wall system that maybe it's at the top, that you're kind of skirting around the size of fence and the size of wall. So it's kind of like a, like a middle ground versus trying to get an eight or 10-foot fence approved. Like do something that may be a little more nicer looking than just slapping a larger wall up potentially, so.
Thank you, Member Baker.
And that's, no more questions for me.
Great, thank you, Member Baker. Just keeping an eye on the chat. If staff could just let me know if they see anything or have any comments, we can let the public chime in as, as, as that comes up. Member McComme, comments, questions?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to reserve my questions. I wanted to hear the presentation. I, I appreciate the information. I'm also looking forward to, to feedback from the town councilor's meeting, you know, both from the applicant as well as from the town counselor. I think Member Baker brought up many of the issues that we'd be concerned about. Landscaping obviously is critical. You know, you talked a little bit about parking. I see a spot there and how that's going to be handled. Obviously, the number one issue is the traffic. And this is a major intersection here in town, as I'm sure you have come to recognize. I, I know that there will be, there's similarities with the Whitman property, maybe not exactly. I'm going to go try to take a ride down, take a look at it. I kind of wish we weren't looking at two major renovations at the same time, at, at the same intersection, but so be it. So if I could just offer for, for one of the next meetings is, I'd like a, I'd like a more detailed look at the traffic during the critical periods. You know, there's a lot of businesses up and down Grove Street. There's a lot of people that live in this area that have to get to work, albeit, you know, during this period. Hopefully, we're going to have the kids back in the school buses. We can't interfere with that. And I, I just think we real, we, we need more detail on the volumes. I'm, I'm not a fan of the averages, but you can give us a range or something and then we can start to hone in. But if we don't satisfy the, the traffic, our, our knowledge of the traffic issues, you know, it makes this project much more challenging. It's already a challenging corner. And it's always been. But I think we, with a potential business going in here, we really need to understand more the volumes during specific periods. So that, that'd be the one thing that I would offer to the applicant. Give us more information and more details about volumes and how it's going to impact so that, that we have a full picture. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I just offer a couple of things on regarding, remember the comments? So we did take a very detailed look at the volumes, specifically comparing the proposed Braintree site with the existing Whitman site. And because of that detailed look, I feel very comfortable that our traffic projections are very, very accurate. So we not only took, obviously, as I explained earlier, the transaction data to know how much traffic the Whitman site generates, but the Whitman site is located at the corner of Routes 27 and 18 that has, that is almost identical to the Grove Street and Liberty Street intersection. It's a major signalized intersection. And we did research traffic volumes through both intersections to determine how, how comparable they are. Because traffic generation at a car wash is absolutely dependent on how much traffic there is in the area. The more traffic you have, the, on the adjacent streets, the more traffic you can expect into the car wash. Because as I noted earlier, most of the traffic is already there. So when we looked at that comparison, we found, for example, the morning peak hour, Grove Street and Liberty Street has 2,576 cars going through that intersection. Where in Whitman, at the 27 and 18 intersection, was 2,569, almost identical. The weekday PM peak hour, Grove and Liberty Street has 2,877 vehicles traveling through the intersection. Where in Whitman, during that same time period, you had 2,727. So slightly more in, in Braintree, but still, you know, within a percent or so. Saturday peak hour, Grove and Liberty currently has 2,176 vehicles in one hour, where the Whitman side actually had substantially more at 2,535. So arguably, that one time period when car washes generate the most amount of traffic, the Saturday peak hour, we can expect to be slightly less here in Braintree than what we observed in, in Whitman. But we didn't make any adjustments for that. We simply took the Whitman transaction data on a Saturday and assumed it to be the same in Braintree, even though the adjacent street volumes are quite a bit lower on a Saturday. So that's all I wanted to just raise.
I know, and, and I appreciate that. I see that in your report, you know, we're, we're, I'm not a traffic expert, but I can, you know, interpret the numbers. And I, I appreciate the analysis with Whitman. I just have to think about, you know, is it, is it truly comparable? And how do we look at the two? Maybe you're right, maybe the volumes are, they're similar. Like I said, they're, they're, they're both a major intersection. So I just have to think about, you know, Whitman relative to other, you know, challenging intersections and think about how that compares. You know, respectfully, we, we get a lot, when a, a lot of applicants come in and they give us averages and they take a look at this and they take a look at that, we, we have to be very selfish, as you know. In terms of Braintree, because we're, we're the ones that are going to get, you know, the pushback. And we have a lot of traffic in Braintree. And we have to be very protective of the major intersections during difficult periods. And we have, you know, businesses that we've had special permits for in the last five years alone. And one didn't do it up, up on Grove Street. But we've had a, a lot of additional, you know, homes and businesses. And we just have to look at it very carefully. So again, if the one thing that I would ask for is, I, I get this and that, I appreciate that. But I, I'd be, I'd just be curious, then what are the numbers? Specifically, almost, you know, day by day, you know, day of the week, at, at those peak hours, including the weekends, I guess, all of it. And just, just let us take a look at it. So if you feel that Whitman is comparable, great, give us those numbers. You know, when are they? You know, you mentioned, i- is it actually worse during the winter? Than other periods? I think more specific information so that we're not so, we have data to support whether we're going to have a problem or not going to have a problem. And we, I think we need to be very clear on it. Much like this is, we, we do exactly the same thing on a number of other projects that we're working on. We need more detailed analysis to justify your position.
Absolutely. I perfectly understand. And if, and we can provide more detail than what's provided in the appendix to the traffic study. But in that appendix, we did provide the Whitman data.
Okay, well, if you, you know, again, for those of us who are not expert, if you want to call out something in a summary, you know, for example, during the week, when we have the buses rolling and people going to work, you, you know, you want to open up at seven, seven, seven to 10, you know, what's that look like? What does that, what does that look like, different days of the week? And if, again, if you want to use Whitman, that's fine. I, I don't know how that works with how Whitman corresponds to other car washes locally, in the state, nationally, I don't, I don't know. May, maybe it, they, you know, car washes have peculiarities which fit all of them. But again, my, my point is that we, we need to, need to justify your position. So we're not going to have a problem like Member Baker was talking about. We can't stack up people on either Liberty or Grove. That, that, that is not going to work. So, so we need to know.
And we can, we can provide the additional detail that you're requesting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme. Member Downey, comments, questions?
I have a few questions. And this may have been presented earlier on. Who actually owns the land there? Does, does Miss Lindenco own that property?
Through you, Madam Chairperson, I can, I can address that. The property is owned by the Hughes Corporation. Ms. Ladenco has entered into a purchase and sales agreement to purchase the property contingent upon permitting for the car wash.
Okay. And I'm going to reserve a lot of my, my questions and comments until we get more info. But to the earlier comments from Member McComme, Member Baker, there's a, a project across the street on the corner that's going to have a drive-through supposedly. So we're looking at two major projects coming at the same time with traffic pouring out and onto those two streets. I think I heard correctly that there are, there can be a three-car backup before traffic hits Liberty. Is that, was I right?
Right. And Ron, do you want to address that? Through you, Madam Chairman.
Sure.
Yeah, no, what we're proposing, the, where the building is located, we will have the capacity to have three cars stacked in queue behind each of the car bays. So you'd have a total of six cars that can queue on those, on the site that haven't yet entered into the building.
And the plan is after three cars are piled or lined up on each side, to put cones behind them so nobody can pull in?
Correct, exactly. And the, as Ms. Ladenco explained, they do have not only video surveillance on the site, but they very well know the peak days of the year. All you have to do is take a day like today when this, when it's snowing. And if tomorrow it's a nice sunny day and reasonably warm, they know full well that there's going to be a higher than usual demand at the car wash. And they will have an attendant onsite to make sure that they can block off that driveway with cones at a moment's notice.
Okay. I'm, I want to just save any other comments I have for future meeting when we get some more info. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Downey. Member Grove, do you have any comments, questions?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mueller, you're saying that there's a three-car-per-lane area there, which I believe is 58 feet long?
Correct.
Mrs., Mrs. Ladenco has told us that car sizes up to 22 feet can be accommodated in the car wash. A car isn't going to pull within two to three feet of the other car, so you're talking 50 feet. So I'm seeing the potential for only four queuing.
Well, I don't know what car is 22 feet in length. I know mine is only about 15 or 16 feet long.
What, what size did you use when you?
So typically, and, and this is a standard that all traffic engineers, engineers use for drive-through queuing, for example, you assume 20 feet per car, and that includes the length of the car. you assume twenty feet per car, and that includes the length of the car plus the distance that typically people have in between, leaving between cars, exactly. You're right that the the first, the one car abortion bay shows fifty eight feet to the property line, but there's still an additional, I want to say, seven or eight feet before you get to Liberty Street. So there may be a two foot overhang.
Before you get to the street or before you get to the sidewalk?
Before you, the sidewalk actually ends before that because there's a wheelchair ramp there, but it would not extend into that wheelchair ramp area. Correct, yep. And the other lane has more than fifty eight simply because of the way that the building is.
Can somebody tell me if there's any external lighting on this structure?
There'll be wall packs on the building through you, Madam Chairperson, to Mr. Grove. There'd be wall packs on the building.
What kind of construction of the wall packs? Are they discharge ramps or?
That that's above my pay grade, Mr. Grove. Let me call upon my client.
No, that that, yeah, I mean.
See if she could. I think I'm sure I'm sure Ms. Lidenko has all of that information. Olga, can you can you address that question to Mr. Grove?
I will have to double check to give you the specific details, so I will get back to you on this.
My concern on the whole question is shielding all the residential property from stray lighting. We did that over at the old Kmart up in the railroad station, you know, you put horizontal bending in front of it. And in this case, you might even be able to go like a foot over and put a cone or something so you don't get any uplighting too.
And and if I may, through you, Madam Chairman, and Olga, correct me if I'm wrong, this this all the all the lighting would be designed to not have any light spillage onto the abutting properties.
Exactly, and all the lights will be shut down for the night.
You'll have no security lighting at all?
We could leave them dimmed if that's allowed by the town, but we definitely don't want to disturb the abutting property by any means.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Member Grove. Melissa, did you have your, did you have your hand up?
I did, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to note for the record that any wall packs that are installed on the building have to be a full cutoff fixture with light shining only down. That was one of the things I had noted in the staff report as well. And then we'll follow up with photometrics to demonstrate zero spill off the property as well.
Thank you. Member Kent, comments, questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I mean, it it seems that it's, you know, pretty tight spacing. And so just going back to the the Whitman comparison, and how big is the footprint or the lot in Whitman? What's the proximity of the Whitman location to anything residential? And is a is one bay an alternative? Is that feasible? Six cars in queue, very seldom, but some percentage of the time in the expectation, obviously, if it's, we're talking about the two bays, but is is one bay feasible?
Through you, Madam Chairperson, I I'll ask Olga if she could respond to that, but keep in mind, the second bay actually helps us to cut down on the queuing because now now drivers have an option to get into one or or the other bay as opposed to just having one, but the you you had some questions about the Whitman side. Olga, can you address perhaps Member Kent, if you could repeat what those questions were?
Absolutely.
Yep. The question was, how big is the 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 site in Whitman? And is it, you know, in proximity to any residential development?
The site in Whitman is actually a little smaller than the sites. The total square footage is close to thirteen thousand square feet, I believe. I can look up an exact number, but it's slightly smaller than site in Braintree. And the proximity to the neighbor to the abutting residential property, there are two residential properties actually, is almost exactly the same. It is twenty feet from the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all? Member Kent, do you have any other comments or questions?
Yeah, that's all. So thank you.
Okay. I have some, I have some, I guess, big picture comments, thoughts that maybe I'll just share, and then some of it, I think, is just kind of a request for additional information, which you might already might already be forthcoming with some of the information that staff has requested, and I think it tags on a lot of the things that other members have raised. I think it would be incredibly helpful if we could see an aerial image under lane beneath the plans. Maybe that's something that you have. But the abutting property, the first residential property next to you on Liberty Street, it's kind of hard to tell the proximity of the development to the house, and it looks like there's a lot of vegetation, all but a narrow strip in the existing condition. And I think as we move forward with trying to understand the impact and the screening and what that looks like, it would be helpful if we could also have a sense for what the residence area looks immediately adjacent to the project. So if that is something we could get, I think that would be helpful. Then we could also see some of the striping on Grove Street and Liberty Street to better understand that intersection as well. I think it's so it's I don't, I couldn't really tell if there was a striping on the streets and any of the plans, but I think an aerial image would help a lot with this. With regards to the queuing that was discussed tonight, if we could get a plan showing the anticipated queue just kind of laid out, so if that's if that's just a sketch of the site with where the cars would queue, I think that would be helpful. You had mentioned that the facility would be monitored potentially by an in person attendant. I'm just curious how the daily operations work. Is there anyone on the site daily, or is that something that's called in? How long does it take someone to get there? If that's the case, just trying to understand how that would work if there were traffic issues and you were going to be needing to put up temporary cones or whatnot. How does the staffing? What is the plan for staffing at the development?
You want us to address that now, Madam Chairperson?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, Olga, can you address that question?
Yeah, absolutely. So the attendant will be on sites daily, actually at least three times a day, whilst this operation is fully automated and does not require the presence of the attendants. However, with which we try to go an extra mile to make sure we make it's clean, it's well maintained, there is no trash. So morning, the attendant will manually open it up, remove all the whatever trash there might be, make sure the equipment operates accurately. In the afternoon, even if there are no traffic issue issues or even nobody on the sites, the attendant comes back again to do exactly the same thing, walk around, remove the potential trash, clean up the barrels, double check the equipments. Same procedure happens during the night, so the attendant comes. Again, everything shuts down automatically, including the lights. However, we want to make sure that there is also a manual check for the cleanliness and proper operation. Was the video surveillance current technology allows you to have a video cam, the video surveillance on your cell phone? So it's pretty easy, and the one of the requirements to the attendant when they're not on site is to monitor the cameras all the time. The attendants, the part of the reason that we'll be hiring the attendant locally is to make sure that they can come over to the site within minutes. So we'll try to find somebody in Braintree, actually, one of the local Briar Tree residents. So if there is any issue that requires attention, they should be there momentarily. As I I think Ron or Barry noted, we usually know when to expect busy days. And we don't want to have any issues. I know the town doesn't want to have any issues with the traffic, but we we don't want any issues even more than the town, frankly. So we will make sure that we predict the heavy sort of queuing, heavy traffic days and arrange the attendant on sites for those.
Okay, and then, you know, so if there was an observed problem, you would anticipate that someone would be there within an hour, half hour sort of thing?
On the half an hour.
Okay. And then is there is there is there signage for someone to contact if there are any issues and the attendant isn't there?
We manage in the base and on the menus with the phone number. And like I said, we always pick it up. We understand that our customers may need to contact us regardless of the day of the week, and if my the early in the morning, my delayed nights. That's what we currently provide in Whitman, and that will be the case in Braintree as well.
Okay, where would the attendant park? Would where where would they park onsite when they were onsite?
Well, the current plan was the parking on the left hand side of the building, but I I guess we'll have to revisit that.
Is that the herringbone hatched area?
Yes.
Is that is that herringbone a different type of pavement?
Brad?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's because it's within the ten foot buffer to residential, it was thought that impervious permeable papers would be an appropriate measure there. But again, we're going to revisit that area, and it's, it needs to be stressed that the permeable pavement was not suggested to be in that location to mitigate stormwater runoff and that the stormwater design itself, as Eric Schumacher had mentioned previously, completely, the subsurface infiltration system completely mitigates all of the stormwater volumes up to a hundred year storm that retains it onsite, which would be shown and which is actually in this location here. So but again, is as we've mentioned, we're going to revisit the design of that area. Sure, there'll be a different plan at your next, by the time your next meeting is.
Okay. All right, that sounds that sounds good. The other comment I wanted to make was with regards to traffic. I know we've had a lot of discussion about comparing this Braintree site to the established site in Whitman. I think, you know, looking at some of the aerial images and reading the traffic study, I I definitely see some similarities, but I think in the instance of the Whitman location, the intersections themselves between the Whitman location and the Braintree location are have very similar volumes, yes. But I think in accessing the actual Whitman car wash site, there's a lot more places to dive into the site to get off the main road, to queue not on the site and to queue within the site. So I think it is a little bit a little bit misleading to say that they're they're the same. With that being said, I think if we can get a queuing plan and and kind of talk through some of the other issues raised by some of the other members this evening, I think that will be helpful. And the one item I had, and I'm sure you have it too, but I was reviewing the minutes from the neighborhood meeting, and I think it is great that, you know, we were able to have that and have such great participation. But three of the takeaways from that neighborhood meeting, one of them was a traffic study. So I just wanted to get clarification. Was the report that was discussed this evening, is that the study that you planned to provide to the community? Was there another traffic study that was discussed? I'm just looking at the notes from the neighborhood meeting saying that the project team committed to providing a traffic study, a noise study, and then the amount of water that was used. So I just wanted to get clarification if there was any further traffic study being provided, or this traffic assessment is what you were committing to at that neighborhood meeting.
Well, I I can address that, Madam Chairperson. I think the the Mr. Mueller was not at the neighborhood meeting in January, so I think the reference that we made was that we could make the traffic study available to anyone that it was submitted as part of a submittal to to the planning board. The other, the the water information similarly was submitted some time ago. We were asked to submit the water records for two years from the town of Whitman for the Whitman location. And refresh my memory, the third.
That was annoying. It's it references a noise.
The noise. So so Ms. Lidenko, I think, Olga, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we just got the noise report today. If I'm not mistaken, so we will be providing that. So all all of those reports will will be part of the record, Madam Chairperson.
Okay, great.
And if I could just also comment on one of your earlier comments, and I apologize, I I meant to have an aerial as 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 part of our presentation to the board. And we will get that for the board, but between now and and in our next meeting with the board, I I would welcome or suggest that if any of the members simply want to Google that address, it does give a very good view of of the location in 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 the proximity and relationship to the neighborhood as well as to the intersection. But we will, we will get you that aerial photograph.
Yeah, I think it's it's a helpful, it's helpful while we're trying to speak to the project, so it's a helpful visual.
The difficulty with the site plan that I'm sure Brad could speak to is, as I mentioned, we've, in order to show the entire site, including the residentially zoned piece that runs along Grove Street, it it caused us to at this scale to have, you know, the the corner where the car wash is proposed to be located makes it a bit smaller than we would have liked. But that was due to having to fit the entire property on the plan.
Sure, I I understand, I understand and sympathize with that as well. And then just one other question I had was with regards to the dumpster. I was just wondering where it was. I didn't, I I didn't see see where it was.
Yeah, I think Brad could share with his cursor. There we go, right, right to the right of the Liberty Street entrance.
Okay, so the type of trash management, is it, what, how is trash managed on the site?
Through you, Madam Chairperson. Olga, can you speak to that?
Right, so there is a trash barrel next to each of the vacuums. That trash barrel is cleans as needed by the attendants at the very least once a day, sometimes more than that, depending on the amount of trash that's being created on the site. And we have a contract with waste management. I don't see reason to use a different enter. They've been great. So the trash pickup truck comes usually very early in the morning, picks up the trash from the dumpster. It could be once a week. That's what we currently do in Whitman. We may arrange for more frequently than that if necessary. The size of the dumpster here is relatively small to make sure it fits nicely into the proposed design. So, yeah. Not your question.
Yeah, I guess I was just confirming that as placed and per your trash protocol, that the trash truck, however, it has to service that has adequate ability to turn in and maneuver and get to the dumpster. I didn't, I didn't know what what style trash service you had, but that was where I, that was what my ultimate thought was in understanding the dumpster trash service on the site.
And I believe we established that, Brad. I think you would.
Well, it's a, the dumpster, correct me if I'm wrong, Olga, the dumpster is on rollers, so the idea would be to move the dumpster, I mean, I believe you indicated, Olga, that it would only need to be emptied once a week. Is that correct?
That should be sufficient.
So it would be moved to the most appropriate location on on the site, you know, in front on the Grove Street side to to facilitate the the emptying of the unit.
So would somebody on trash day wheel it over to a better location to be dumped?
It, the truck, the truck would come in on the Liberty side, so what would happen is obviously, it's a one way. obviously it's a one-way traffic circulation. So somebody would roll the dumpster over probably to this area. So that, and most of the trash trucks now have a front loading system. So my, my guess is that this will be rolled over here, the truck will come in, the dumpster will be emptied, and the truck will proceed out on the Grove Street.
Okay, it might be helpful to confirm that, just in case it impacts dumpster location. That's all. Um, I think those were really the bulk of the questions I had, I had tonight. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to ask questions? Has staff received any questions on their end? If anybody from the public would like to ask a question, please, oh, I think we might have a hand raised. It's exciting.
We do, Madam Chair. And before we get into the public, I would just like to note for the record, there was some items that were mentioned this evening. If Olga could submit, she kind of detailed like a day in the life of laser car wash in Braintree. If she could provide that narrative in writing to the board regarding the attendees, what's available on site to access the attendees and those types of things. I did have some questions related to that in the staff report as well. In addition, we do not have anything in our file relative to the water usage. If that could be submitted, I don't, I don't know where that was submitted to. We don't have that information. Looks like the noise study is forthcoming. That's one of the other items we had asked for several months ago. To your point, Member Joyce, I think in addition to the things that you had stacking and whatnot to be added to the plan that the trash truck, you know, the maneuverability of that coming onto the site and being able to navigate. I, I think those things are important. I'm, I'm having a difficult time getting my hands around the, on the site circulation. So anything that can enlighten, enlighten me or provide more information so that I can, uh, hopefully get a little bit more comfortable with what's being proposed this evening.
Melissa, can I, Melissa, if I could add, do we have a snow removal plan?
We do not.
Okay. Put it on the list.
And sorry, Melissa, just with regards to circulation, before we move away from it, did we get feedback from the fire department and emergency services that they have adequate maneuverability?
Um, we do have comments from the fire department. Connor's getting those out right now. Um. We do. If I may, Madam Chair, for the record, the Braintree Fire Department has received and reviewed the proposed plans. The department has also previously met with the applicant. The fire department does not require that access to the property meet all NFPA and 527 CMR standards with regard to access road widths and curb cuts. Braintree Fire Department does not oppose this application.
Great, thank you.
Um, so I'm, I'm keeping a list, Madam Chair. I might have additional things that come up, but I'm just kind of listening to the board members' questions and comments and taking notes. I hope the applicant is, is as well, because there's quite a bit of information that's been requested this evening. Thank you.
All right, um, so we have a question in the chat. Melissa, how do you want to handle comments? Do you want me to just monitor?
Yeah, if you want to call out, if you want to call out the people that raise their hands, we'll take a look at the chat while you're doing that and then we can, we can go to the chat.
All right, sounds good. So we have an attendee who has raised their hand, Liz Page, if you would like to ask your question or comment.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions and I have a couple of comments based on the stuff that was discussed tonight. One comment was made that there would be two waiver requests regarding landscaping. I understood from the conversation that one was regarding the parking. That's to the left of the building. And that would be on the side near Liberty Street, near the residential property. I noticed that staff said that she was not supporting that special permit. And I would definitely agree with Melissa. I feel like there should not be given any kind of a waiver to a buffer between a residential property and a business. If anything, there should be a stronger buffer there. So that concerns me. And what is the other buffer or the other landscape waiver request?
If I may, through the chair, the other one is for, it looks like Brad's pulling up the plan. Um, it's around, yes, the abutting, the public way.
Okay, the parking, that's all by the DOT.
Uh, well, the, that, that setback is, is supposed to be 10 feet from the property line. And if you can see on the plan on the screen where the cursor is, yeah, I, I, I I think that corner is, is about a foot.
Okay.
And again, I, for the record, I, I have been discussing this with Brad in the team in detail, and there is quite a bit of greenery within the MassDOT layout. And I think there might be an opportunity to reduce that buffer a little bit in the front. But it's got to be accompanied with, when I say landscaping plan, I mean, what, what's been provided respectfully is not, is not going to cut it. We need to have extensive, extensive landscaping in that area if it's going to be reduced at all.
Okay, okay, so then some of my other comments were, I'm really disappointed. I attended the, the neighborhood meeting in January and I'm really surprised and disappointed that no real numbers were put out about water usage. And Olga mentioned 20 to 40 gallons per car wash, but she gave us nothing for an annual number. So in Braintree, the average home uses 46,000 gallons of water per year. The average car wash, which I don't know how this place will compare with the average one, but the average car wash would consume 1.3 million gallons of water a year. And I think that at a time like this, when we are living with constant water restrictions and Braintree residents can't water their lawn and you can't wash your own car in your yard, yet we're going to have this business that will be using a great deal of water, one of our most precious commodities. And I'm not hearing any discussion about conservation and it, it just really concerns me that this topic is just kind of being ignored. And I think that it deserves a lot of discussion. And so I'm curious about their yearly water usage. And I am also, they do not reuse any water. I know some car washes recycle. And so I would like to know why that isn't an issue. The other thing that concerns me, in addition to the buffer on the, on the Liberty Street side, I am concerned about the conservation property on the Grove Street side. And I think there should be some kind of a, maybe a chain link fence or something that separates it to keep their debris and trash from blowing into that property and to protecting that property a little bit more. I am also confused with how this falls on the use table. Can you give me some idea about it? Because there is not a car wash in our use table and it's not in our zoning bylaws.
Madam Chair, can I address two, two recent points, if I may, through the chair? The, the item about the water usage and the recycling has been raised by the Water and Sewer Department. That was in the department comments that has been shared with the applicant, that was shared with them on Friday. So I would anticipate based on, on this meeting this evening that there's going to be some revisions potentially to the recycling components of the car wash. And then included in the planning staff report is an opinion, I think it goes back a couple of months now, from our in-house town solicitor outlining the use in the category of it falling into motor vehicle repair and service, and I can make that available if you'd like.
Okay, for the record, I would like to state that a car wash is not a motor vehicle repair or a service. And how was it defined at the car wash on Union Street?
Uh, the Union Street car wash, I'd have to go back and look at the files. There are some permits on those, and I believe it was considered accessory to the gas station. I'd have to research that though, but there is, like I said, there is an opinion. It's supported by a court case. This has actually come up before through the court systems and the land use materials. And like I said, I can make that opinion available. So our, our, our in-house counsel did the opinion, not, not the attorney for the applicant. The opinion was prepared by the town.
Right, and from what I understand, I thought the Comprehensive Zoning Group discussed that car washes were not in the zoning bylaws and they were not on the use table.
Uh, that's correct. The, the actual word "car wash" is not in the use table. An opinion was requested. Legal research was done by our solicitor. They found recent case law in a court case that supports the inclusion of this in that category. One of the other things that has come up several times as part of the comprehensive rezone is the terms used in the use table and the availability for those terms to be interpreted based on case law. So that's exactly what happened in this situation.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, could we, there were, if, if you want us to, there were a couple of items that Ms. Page asked about that we can address on the water usage. I know Olga has information on that. And again, we can resubmit the information that we were asked, we were asked to submit the, the water bills for the facility in Whitman for a two-year period, which we did. I know Melissa indicated she, she's not sure where those were submitted, so we'll make sure we get those to her. And then I think, Brad, do you want to touch on, if I may, through you, Madam Chairperson, in terms of discussions to date with the CONCOM relative to any kind of fencing or anything like that? That they, well, she asked about, I know you're shaking your head, Melissa, but she asked about adding a fence along, along that property. I think we'd like to explain why that's probably not necessary.
Just to clarify, are we talking about this area?
Yes, I assume so, yes.
Okay. Not, not, no discussion with the Conservation Commission regarding a fence in that area has been, has been made. It's all of the, all of, if, this is where the, there should be no trash directed towards this area. That the, the trash cans are over here by the, by the vacuum areas. So, and again, there'll be, the attendant will monitor them on a daily basis and take them to the dumpster in, in this location over here. So there should be very, very little trash directed. So no, it never came up. And this plan, as Barry had alluded to in his presentation, is the result of probably three meetings with the Conservation Commission. And this is the plan that we think the commission will ultimately approve based on feedback received from them last week. At, at one point, we had a lane on this side of the building, a bypass lane, and we had work all the way up to the limit of the wetland, the BBW area here. And had asked for a waiver under the local wetland bylaw and regulations to work within the 25-foot buffer to BBW. It was met, it was met with mixed reaction from the commission members. And after a meeting with, with the planning staff and further discussion with the commission, we think that we developed a plan that not only respects the wetland resource buffer with no work within the 25-foot buffer to BBW, but also from an operation, operational standpoint, a function, functionality standpoint works. So while this is the first meeting that we've had with the planning board, we've had several with CONCOM. And based on feet, the, the plan as, as as presented to CONCOM and, you know, from a, from an environmental standpoint, it's certainly an improvement over existing site conditions and that the stormwater system presently, the entire, all the runoff from the site sheet flows out into Grove Street down, I don't have this entire plan on sheet, down into the closed drainage system, which eventually discharges into the wetland across the, across the street from Shopping Plaza, untreated, unattenuated. This stormwater system will take all the runoff from, from the paved surfaces, renovate it, treat it in accordance with current state standards and, and recharge it back into the groundwater table. And we're, we're actually exceeding the requirements of local and state stormwater management regulations. So the commission is very pleased with the current configuration of the site. But we do understand there's a balance here. We do need to revisit some of the areas that staff had mentioned in their report and, and provide some supplemental information that the members have mentioned here tonight.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Page, do you, I don't know if you're still unmuted and whatnot, but is, are you all set?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for that feedback.
Thank you.
We have a comment in the chat from Dylan. It says, what would the process of using the vacuum be? Would the customer have to pull back around after using the car wash?
Hey, who, Brad, do you, or who, who wants to address this?
I, I could address it. The hope would be that a vehicle in the queue would see the vacuums and there would be signage to, to encourage people to use the vacuums before they pass through the car wash. But if someone did, if someone did want to come out, they could easily back up into the space here and use a vacuum if they didn't vacuum the car before they pass through the queue. And again, we're going to revisit the site circulation in this area as well. But that was the thought, that was what was discussed with staff when we met. Because at one point, we had two parallel parking spaces adjacent to the building, and this was thought to be a better, better design. So, I mean, Ron can, Ron can comment relative to the, the, the traffic, the anticipate, you know, an average day or average hour, what the, what the traffic would be, the, the chance for somebody to, very little traffic, we would expect to use this bypass. If someone pulls into the site, they're going to want to either come over here to use the vacuums or pass through the car wash. So the potential for vehicle conflicts here with somebody wanting to use the bypass and someone on occasion coming out of the car wash and wanting to just back up into the parallel space, we think are minimal.
Okay, great, thank you. I have another attendee with their hand raised, Steve Scashia. Maybe, maybe I don't see him on the hand raise anymore. Go ahead, Steve, if you, if you have the ability to.
Thank, thank you for letting me speak, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. I just, I'm just listening in and wanted to clarify on that last point that Ms. Santucci-Rozzi made about the use table. It's, it seems to me that if we are determining that a car wash is actually a service station or automotive repair service under the business use section of the use table, we're actually saying that as of a couple of months ago, whenever this was determined, car washes are now allowed by right on two-thirds of all the commercial properties in town. Right? Because highway business and commercial both allow both of those uses by right. So as I sit here and listen to the concerns about water usage and traffic queuing, that seems like a concern that maybe either the planning board or I as a counselor with, with Ms. Santucci-Rozzi could maybe update the use table and either add car wash requiring special permits or modify the current uses to require special permits.
All right, that is noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, does any, oh, did you have any other comments or questions?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anybody else have any comments, questions? Connor, have you received any emails, questions? Just want to make sure we hear anyone who wants to.
We don't have any email questions at this time. Chair Joyce.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just a quick point of clarification, Erin, to kind of go off of what Mr. Shashi was saying. Melissa, correct me from wrong, we're not allowed to add any uses to the zoning table without a rewrite, correct?
If I may, through the chair, we, as, as everyone's aware, we were proposing to make quite a few changes. That was obviously not put forward and withdrawn. And the desire is to wait till we have a master plan to make those changes. So again, this was an opinion out of the town solicitor's office. The planning staff is not putting together any amendments to address this at this time. There are obviously uses allowed by right and by special permit in different districts. And I think this is something that can be noted by the counselor and/or put forward by the council if they'd like to make this somewhat, you know, reactive amendment.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Member Baker. All right, so it sounds like we have a list of some additional information that'll be provided. And the applicant will continue to work with staff. And I'm not seeing any other additional questions or comments from the public. So it's, looks like we'll probably be looking for a continued meeting date.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I think we were all expecting some information on water and it was brought up. I expected it to come since it was brought up at the council's meeting. But I just note to the applicant that, that none of the board members have any information about water. Bills or usage or anything. And I think, you know, that information would be appreciated, so we could evaluate that as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member McCallum.
Madam Chair, could I just ask for a quick clarification on the, on the legal opinion that was obtained perhaps through you? Melissa, do the board members have, have the opinion from, from attorney Tom?
Yes, they do.
They do? Okay, fine, fine. Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yep, they do.
Thank you.
So. All right. So what would be the next date?
Madam Chair, in my, in my staff report, I had recommended that this be continued to April. We do have a meeting on March 9th. We have three hearings already scheduled for that evening. And the, the submission deadline for the March 9th meeting is Monday, February 22nd. And in order for some plan revisions to be made, in order for the staff to be able to sit down with the applicant again, respectfully, I don't think that that can happen before the 22nd. It's, it's less than two weeks away. I think it's worth taking the time. There was quite a bit of information that was, that was brought up today. I know there has been extensive effort at the Conservation Commission. They did continue their last meeting on Thursday. And, you know, respectfully balancing both the, the concerns from the planning board and the Conservation Commission has become a little bit more tricky in this particular application. And that, you know, advancing certain boards' concerns over, I, 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 I don't know if they can satisfy both boards respectfully. And I would like an opportunity to engage the conservation staff. This is a very, very large lot. There is an opportunity to improve the wetlands on the residential portion of the property. Brad McKenzie had spoke briefly about a previous plan. And I think the applicant will agree. I was much more excited about that plan. That plan addressed a lot of the things that were brought up this evening. So I would like to continue this to April. I would like the opportunity to engage the conservation staff and really look at this and look at the, what's being proposed, what the impacts are to the wetlands. And if we can possibly get creative with replicating potentially and just really trying to provide an opportunity for utilization of the general business portion on this property. Excuse me, is about 15,000 square feet. But it's restricted by that existing curb line. And that curb line is, is respectfully creating a lot of the questions that I have this evening. Heard a lot of testimony tonight about traffic from the board members and a little bit from the public. And from my perspective, it's not so much a volume issue. It's a, can this site accommodate what's going to be happening on the site? And what's going to be entering the site and exiting the site? And the opportunity to really try to create a superior situation over what's being proposed today. And really trying to work on eliminating stacking that's actually prohibiting access to the site. And trying to come up with a site that the stacking isn't blocking the access so that you could still get onto the site if you just wanted to vacuum your car. Or if you were in fact the attendant that had to get to the site. You know, that's a logical question. There's a problem on the site with six cars stacked. Someone presses the button, Olga's guy's on call, he's there in five minutes, but he can't even get on the property. So we need to think about these things and we need to, you know, this board is, is very responsible in making sure that things work as intended. And, and that obviously is, is a massive goal of mine as well. And reasoning is because we want the applicant to be successful as well. So I, I think that as, as presented, and I think that's evident in my staff report, it's, it's tight. And how can we, how can we improve, improve upon that? Is really going to be one of the main goals and improving upon that, I think is going to help address a lot of the things that were raised, raised this evening. We did get comments from some of the other departments I had mentioned earlier. Those have been shared with the applicant. I know they'll be looking at those in detail. And an opportunity to even pull in water and sewer and the engineering department. And have a, a meeting to kind of ensure that, again, everyone's addressed, everyone's concerns are equally addressed. I also wanted to let the planning board know that there's going to be some study done of Grove Street by CTPS, Central Transportation Planning Staff in coordination with Matt Dot, Mass Dot. We're going to be having a meeting representatives from the town, including myself and those of the DPW department, to have an understanding of what they're thinking about in Grove Street. And I will be speaking about the projects in this, on this, excuse me, on this quarter, up at these corners and making sure that Mass Dot is aware of what's happening here and that those are things that are taken into consideration along with any improvements they, they could be making in the quarter. So April.
And, and, and Madam Chairperson, if, if I may, obviously, you know, prior to tonight, in anticipation of a continuance, you know, we, we certainly want to keep moving this project forward. In light of the comments that we received from the director today and her report, as well as the comments by, by the members tonight and, and the follow-up that we are going to need to do, we, we concur with the director's comments that April would make more sense than March. It will give us an opportunity to, to address the comments that, that the members and, and the director have made. I, I think we're on the same page. I think we've heard and understand very well the comments and concerns that have been raised tonight by both the members as well as the residents who came to tonight's meeting. And I, and I trust we'll be able to satisfy everyone's comments and concerns between now and, and the next time we come before you in April. So we, we appreciate your time. We appreciate your consideration and respectfully request a continuance of the public hearing to the meeting of, I believe it's April 16th.
If I may clarify through the chair, it's April 13th, I believe. Let me just double check. Yes, Tuesday, April 13th, and that would be at 6:00, 6:15 PM. If I could have a motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Cheryl, Cheryl entertained a motion to continue this, the, the public hearing for 345 Grove Street to April 13th at 6:15. We have a motion by Member McCallum. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Remember Downey, was that you seconding?
I think, I think two people did, but I was louder.
Give you credit.
You're always louder.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And myself also, yes. All right, so we will see you back in April.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you then. That date, I think, is better because the 16th would have been a Friday night that I don't wanted to meet on. So I thank, thank you again, and we'll, we'll see you on April 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a 6:15 continued public hearing for 8 through 10 and 40 Arnold Street, Planning Board File Number 20-02.
Madam Chair, are you going to, as you, as we all know, you're not participating in the next application. We do have two administrative items. I don't know if you would like to adjourn your participation this evening or if you will be coming back after we finish this public hearing. If you don't want to do that, I recommend that we take the minutes and the reappointment to the Master Plan Committee before you leave.
Yeah, sure. Let's, let's do that. Hopefully those two items will be not take too much time. So we had the November 10th and December meeting minutes for approval, correct? Or were there all three?
No, all three. All three should have been sent. Did you not get the January?
They were emailed.
Okay.
I thought I saw two of them. All right.
Those might have come a little bit later because we weren't sure if Louise had finished them, if I was going to have a chance to prove them. But if you haven't had a chance, Madam Chair, we can do November and December and do January next month. It's up to you.
No, that's fine. I just, I did have a, I did want to know a suggested revision to the November meeting minutes. I believe the November meeting was Chairman Harnes's last meeting. So some of the minutes, without going through specifically and cumbersomely going through the revisions, some of the minutes reflect, it starts to reflect me as the new chair, but then it references me as vice chair later on in the minute, so it's just a little confusing.
Okay.
That's the only revision.
We'll double check that.
So do we want to just make a motion to approve the minutes with that revision? Or do we?
Okay, that, that's fine with me, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the planning board meetings for November 10th, December 8th, and January 12th, 2021. With the discussion items that Erin just pointed out for revision.
Great, thank you. Motion by Member Baker to approve minutes. Do I have a second? Second by Member Grove, Member Baker.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes, for January 12th. The other two, I was not here for.
Sounds good. All right, and myself, yes, for all three. And then real quick, we have on our agenda the planning board reappointment to the Master Plan Committee. Is that the last item that we wanted to do tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I'll, I'll make a motion for Chairman Joyce to be the representative from the planning board.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion by Member McCallum to appoint Member Joyce, a second by Member Baker, and a roll call vote. Member Baker.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
I will recuse myself.
Luck.
I will do my best to represent you all. And of course, everyone else. But thank you for that. I look forward to working with the Master Plan Committee and, and the town on this effort. It's very exciting. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
I think with that, is that?
Yeah, and just, just quickly want to recognize before Member Joyce leaves that this is Member Baker's last meeting. He's been with us for a few years now and he's just great. And we're sad to see you go, but we wish you the best of luck with your business and your, and your new family. And don't be a stranger.
No, I definitely won't be.
Member Baker, I just wanted to thank you so much for the time. I mean, I know, know you have a, a baby at home and you're a, own your own business and you're an architect and your expertise and time is just so much appreciated. So thank you so much for all, all you've done and all you've added to the projects that we've worked on together over the years. It's, it's been great. We're going to really miss you.
No, thank you, Erin. I appreciate that. It's been, it's been a lot of fun. I, I consider everyone friends, not just committee members. It's been a lot of fun. I, I talked to everyone personally, so it's been great to meet everybody.
All right, so I think, I think with that, Member Baker, you can become chair for this application. And I will talk to you guys. I'll talk to you guys in March.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so the continued public hearing, you know, supposed to be 6:15, a little delayed. Just a touch. So we don't have to reopen this because it's already open, correct, Melissa?
Correct.
Yep, so it's for 8 to 10 and 40 Arnold Street, Planning Board File Number 2002. It's the Amendment to Special Permit and Site Plan Review for Adam Street Enterprises, LLC, is the applicant. And Site Plan Review uh, for Adam Street Enterprises LLC as the applicant. Um, do we have any correspondence to enter in uh, Melissa for this evening?
We do, um, member Baker, we have an updated correspondence list that um. Louise had prepared for us with correspondence. Um, noted on the list through number eighty-nine. Dated February fifth, and I want to note for the record. Um, the town engineer could not be with us here this evening. But he has provided correspondence uh, dated today. Uh, noting that uh, quote, I am okay with the traffic mitigation measures as we discussed on the phone last week. And as described below. Um, and noting that um, the plans are conceptual. And that a hundred percent drawings will be provided and approved by DPW. Um, when we get into, there's one other thing noted here, when we get into talking about the conditions. I will talk about one revision to the mitigation. On, or on my part um, that I've discussed with both. Um, Jeff Dirk from the applicant team uh, and also the town engineer.
Okay, great. Um, so I have to enter in the correspondence. We need to take a roll call vote for anything or just enter it into the?
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Okay, um, so I'll take a roll call vote to enter the correspondence that Melissa just uh, went over. Uh, member Downey?
Yes.
Uh, member McComme?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
And member Kent?
Yes.
And also uh, Chair Baker, uh, yes. So should I uh, give it over to the applicant to uh, present the uh, revisions of the plan that we discussed the last meeting?
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate. Uh, I can be available uh, at any point for any follow-up. We also have Phil Paradise, a peer review. Uh, engineer with us on Stormwater side, and we also have Greg Lucas. Uh, peer review from Beta on the traffic side, if there's a need to, to uh, hear from them as well.
Okay, awesome. Uh, so Mr. Palucci, our attorney Palucci, I'll hand it over to you.
Good evening, members of the board. As you know, we're seeking to construct a commercial development. Uh, at this location that we, we're calling the Riverside Business Park on what's now a, currently a concrete plant. Based on the feedback from this board. The planning department uh, in the peer review, we've made uh, over the course of this process. Significant changes to the project that we first proposed before you. Just to recap some of those, we have agreed to demolish the existing two-family home on the site. Uh, it was not originally part of the, the project area. It was separate and apart, but owned by the, by the same owner, Mr. Lang. Um, so what we did is we agreed to demolish the two-family, which allowed us um. To provide additional flood storage at grade, which was an issue uh, raised by the peer review. Previously, uh, more recently, and what I anticipate will be updating you on this evening. Are the changes that we made to stormwater management on the site. Uh, those again were um. Based upon the peer review that Mr. Parities did. Uh, we also, we have with us tonight, we have our LSP Anthony Andronico, who can answer any questions about the environmental issues. On the site. I know at our last meeting, I don't believe he was present and um, members had indicated that they may have some questions that they wanted him here tonight. So we get the whole team tonight. Uh, Mr. Andronico, we have Andrew Arsenal, who's our um, traffic engineer. Garrett Tunisin to discuss our restoration uh, plans and Sean Hardy and Chi Man to address the stormwater management. Uh, and I think at this point, it might be a good idea for me to kick it over to Mr. Hardy, who can walk us through. Uh, or walk the board through the changes that we made to the stormwater management.
Um, good evening, um, Sean Hardy, engineer for the applicant. I'm actually gonna defer to Chi Man, my partner. He handled the stormwater side of things. So, Chi, take it away.
Thank you. Dear, you.
Hopefully he doesn't defer to anybody else.
Well, I have all the prints ready. I'd like to share my screen. Um, so we can.
You should be all set, Chi.
Yep. So we can actually look at the screen itself when I go through the changes as uh. Attorney Palucci, um, talk about, we, we moved the single, uh, the two-family building, used to be where my cursi is. And we created on the site plan, create um. Very large area of Meldo area and on, on the recent change, we actually utilized this area as one of our stormwater management area. To hold back some of the um, runoff, um, provide more um. Storage volume from, from the onsite runoff and promote more um, onsite. Infiltrations and we kept our, with a walk area right by this Meldo area and um, you can see on the upper left-hand corner. We do have a little parking lot here, is for public use for the um, with a walk. And public can park here and walk down um, a stone dust path and they can walk along the site sidewalk. All the way to the um, we have a proposal, little overlook area at the, at the middle of the site. I'm gonna go to the um. Drainage grading and drainage friend a little bit. So on the, we go back and forth with our peer review engineers, um, we have some disagreement, but we work it out with between uh, conservation commissions. Um, the PVV and also the town staff. Um, we. Basically, what we did was we come up with um, with, there was a um. This agreement on how we propose the existing conditions. And we come up with a um, two thousand and two thousand, two thousand and five. Uh, DP filing plans. Melissa, take up on the old files and we use that as the baseline of the existing conditions. And with that, and we did additional test pit onsite at where we are proposing the um. Uh, underground retentions. So. From the entrance of the site where we are coming in for Arnold Street, we have um. Again, on the site design, we have the existing building B. Uh, proposed building D, which is a contractor bay building. Um, we can, we can demolish the two-family house here. And one of the change we have is we are demod- demolishing a, um, the existing. Office building, which is, it looks more like a single-family house, but um, the, for the size, but we are proposing a um. Uh, nine thousand square foot two bay warehouse in place of that building. And with that, on the, I would say the, the west side of the site because of the groundwater elevations. Um, the west, um, the west side of the site, we primarily utilize underground detention system. To mitigate our stormwater and discharge back into the river. And I mentioned before, we also uh, utilize the two Meldo area and um. Use that for little detentions and infiltration as well. Moving towards the east side of the site where we have the proposed um, large hundred and thirty-nine thousand warehouse building. On this side of the site, we have um, multiple underground. Retention system. This system will take the surface runoff from the building. And the roof and the driveway. Um, and then we collect by the catch basin and treat it with the um, storm scepter and then um, this. Runoff will be mitigate by the underground system. And it will be discharging out to either the wetlands or the, the site. So overall, our. Stormwater management system is going to be providing uh, sufficient um, fast storage volume. And also mitigate the two ten, twenty-five, a hundred year storm. And we are lowering the um, peak rate runoff as, as far as the volume that we are discharging uh, offsite. And um. Again, we did additional test pit to verify the site conditions, the soil conditions and uh, that's. Under the um, P V V O um, request and all the soil conditions are verified that the site is going to be um. The site condition is sup- can support this invasion system with, you know, proper groundwater um, separations and also the, the, the soil conditions. And um. With that, um, I think I'm gonna turn over to. Um, Garrett, he can talk about, a little bit about the um, site restorations. Uh, and the um, or Tony can talk about the medications of the uh, contaminated contamination soil.
Thanks, Chi. I'm gonna first bring up a, a quick. Plan here, sketch. Sorry. Hold on a second, it didn't grab what I was trying to grab. Misdirection. Okay, sorry about that. I think I have it. It didn't come up. Uh, Chi, do you have the um, uh, remediation and, and consolidation plan?
If I may, Garrett and Chi.
Okay, thank you.
The one that, the one that you did that was like super simple with just.
Yes.
That one would be amazing.
Yes, that's the one I'm trying to pull up. For some reason, I click on it and it doesn't, it's not, not loading.
Let me see if I can um.
It says my sharing was paused, so I don't know what was going on. Uh, okay, yeah, see if you have it.
So this is not the one?
No, it, it says um. Can, I think a remediation, uh, remediation consolidation plan or restoration consolidation plan, Chi, I don't know if you have it.
It's a landscape friend. Um, why don't you go ahead? I'm trying to pull that up. Give me a second. If you, if you'd like to go ahead with some of the um.
So you're gonna try to pull it up?
I'm gonna try to pull up. Why, why do you?
Thanks. I'll see if I can do it again. It's sitting right here. I just clicked on it, but it wouldn't come up. It's not coming up. Am I uh? It's not coming up.
Is it?
It, it looks like that, yes.
I got it. Here it is.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much. Uh, yes, sorry about that. So. Between our last meeting and this, this current meeting. We uh, met, or we had, we had our own Zoom meeting with uh, town representatives and uh, the review consultants. And one of the questions that came up was uh, that there was some difficulty understanding the plans because we were. As you, I'm sure you've seen through the packet, there are several. Different plans for all of the different activities that are occurring here on the site. So we actually came up with a construction sequencing plan, but there was, it was a very busy plan. So uh, to simplify it and address the issues of being able to comprehend it, just because there's so much on there. We understand just because we created all of this, you know, the, uh, all the different layers uh, on the different plants. So to simplify it, we came up with this three uh. Different hatches on this plan to represent the three different areas. So what I wanted to explain was the restoration and how this is being done, remediation and restoration. Um, when I'm done, we, I can turn this over to Tony for any additional comments, if he has any. Or, you know, has any additional things he would like to explain. So. There's also a construction sequencing that went along with this. Um, from the conversations that we had. Between the review team, town representatives and ourselves. It appeared that there was still uh, some concern about exactly how we were going to. Um, construct the, the site as far as the construction sequencing. What we came up with was uh, it was, we don't quite understand how you're doing this, all these different moving parts. So we came up with a very comprehensive construction plan, but it is very detailed. There were still concerns because we didn't have this um, sketch at the time. So we, I went back and I made a very simplified one, and you may have seen that. It's one page long. Then we have a more extensive one, which is the one we'll use along with um, the order of conditions and the um. The uh, as far as the approval um, from the board, once we get all the conditions, we'll in, incorporate that with the construction sequence. But for here, I'd like to explain exactly what we're doing, uh, simplified version. So with the rest, with the remediation and restoration, we want to start over on where you can see transect one, transect two, three, four eggs. So we want to start over here. And what we would do is. Have it staked out. It would be uh, the trees would be cut. Through, say, transect one through three. And we would halt the cutting. Then we would put in the erosion controls. We would uh, grub. Excavate. Replace the soil. So we would do that only in transect one. So it'd be tran- you know, to start with transect one, we would uh, basically do those steps, replace the soil, place down coconut matting. And a core log, eighteen-inch coconut rolled log. At the end of the transect where we're doing the work, so right along here. The end of this blue area. Um, and then we would do um, the restoration, which is uh, you know, as far as the seeding. And the planting. And one of the comments that came up with the Conservation Commission was. Um, to seed underneath the coconut matting, which can be done in some situations because we appear that we're gonna have. Uh, different densities of the coconut matting, probably four hundred gram, six hundred gram. And nine hundred gram. And with the four hundred, you can put the seed underneath. With the six hundred, I like to put some on top and some below, it's a little denser. And then with the nine hundred, you have to put the seed on top. So we would do that and plant the um, shrubs in the trees in this area. And then move on to transect two, transect three, cutting again on transect. Four, five, probably just do one or two here, no more than that. And we'd move along all the way up to transect eleven. And that's where we would stop. Um, and then. That's probably, I don't know if that's all we're gonna get done this, this coming year. If we have additional time. We would then move up to the far end, up around um, twenty-nine. Um, or. Up in this area to do the um. Compensatory storage and work on any of the remediation up there. So that's how it would be done. And then we eventually will move back down to twenty-one, stop there and then move along the wall. The area where you see in. Blue, those are the areas where we're gonna be doing the remediation and the restoration. The areas that you see in the orange hatch. Those areas are only cut and treat of invasive plant species. And then um, after probably two growing seasons, that'll be at our discretion. We see about seventy-five percent of the invasives are gone, then we'll do the seeding and the planting with the shrubs and trees in those areas. As shown on the planting plans. And the area in green. That, the uh. Soils that contain the ASR, the hazardous material, will be placed. In the green area, and that's where it will be filled and then capped. So that's pretty much what we're going to do uh, as far as the remediation and restoration. Um, there were a few comments uh, from the review engineer. They were looking for an updated uh. Basically, our areas and buffer zones and square footages of impact. That we will update. Uh, we just were waiting for final approval on the plan so that we could get. We could get to the point where we know that these are gonna be the, these are the plans. We will. Update. There's only one areas with square footage has changed, and that's the impervious, where it looks like we took some of the plantings out of a couple of the. Landscape islands, just because of the hazardous material below the, the uh, the LSP didn't think we should be digging in. And then where those areas, we just move those trees back into the bordering land subject to flooding area. Up in the area, transects twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, up in those areas. So that's, that, that's the only major change. Um. Everything else is pretty standard. Uh, I didn't see any significant uh, questions. There was another question there that we're also answering the same way. It has to do with the plans. So that's pretty much it. I think we're down to really not having any additional questions or concerns regarding the restoration or the wetlands. Tony, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, Garrett. Just a couple of I don't know if you could put that that screen back up. Well, in any case. Oh, thank you, Sean. Just a couple of points to add to this this. Our company is where there's ASR that will be encapsulated under pavement that I depicted, just for the sake of completeness, I'm mentioning it now. That's going to be up in the northwest area under pavement in between building F and the blue hatched area. So that'll be a, you know, a restricted area. And then also in the in the middle of the U shaped building, there's a smaller area of ASR in there that'll also be capped. So those, you know, those aren't depicted on this plan, but those are parts of the remediation as well. The the concept for us starting down at area one is to remediate the the areas between the retaining wall and the wetlands. And then actually to construct the retaining wall, you know, from area one all the way around to about 11 or so. So that we can raise the elevation and actually make a home for all the materials that eventually going to get excavated from the northwest area. So that's kind of how that sequencing works. So even though the actual development and building construction will start on the western portion of the site, we have to make room for it all with the compensatory flood storage area, we'll move that all over to the to the east. And eventually that'll get graded down, covered with a temporary cap. And then eventually, when the first phase of construction is done, we move to the second phase with the large building. We'll move to the the final cap and build a construction there. So that's that's sort of the the long term sequence for how that's going to go. Not sure if I've got anything else to add, but certainly available to answer questions anybody may have.
Chip Baker, if I may jump in for one minute. Mr. Andronico, can you just update us on the EPA approval of the of the plans? I know that you gave us an update last month, and there was some follow up in between the last two meetings, which obviously resulted in some changes to the landscaping and whatnot. So if you can just give us an update on that, that'd be great.
We did get some comments from EPA. And we issued a response to comment, or at least a proposed response to comment letter. Waiting to hear back to see if those responses are acceptable. I would characterize the the comments as relatively minor clarification type of thing. Nothing that suggests the plan as we've put forward is going to be unacceptable.
What do you anticipate the turnaround time is on that?
I'm hoping it will be within the next couple of weeks. It just went to EPA last week. You know, I was, you know, basically on Kim Tisa's schedule was was pretty booked up when we first sent the plans to her. And she said it would be after the first of the year before she could get back to us. And she was fairly responsive with the full review of the plans to get us her initial comments. So I think these follow up comments, you know, should take less time. And that's why I'm hopeful, you know, like a one or two week window is not unreasonable to accept expect. Although I haven't heard directly from her to commit to a timeframe, but that's my that's my hope.
Thank you. Appreciate. Is there anything else on the applicant that wants to add to the any like traffic studies or anything else you want to show for tonight's meeting?
Well, that's all we are looking to present at this time, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have either now or after they hear from the peer review.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Palmucci. I think I'll open up to the public, Melissa. Does anyone have their hand raised or anyone looking to speak potentially about the project?
Oops, sorry. I don't see anything in the chat. Steve Sasha does have his hand up.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again. I just had a couple of one point of clarification that I was hoping to get made tonight. And then a couple of concerns that I wanted to raise. The point of clarification is on the Adams Commercial Intersection. The the diagram of that intersection has a stop line. It's it's been debated among the residents whether there is still a stop sign there or not. Could somebody clarify that heading from Adams Street onto Commercial?
If I may, through the chair, the stop sign is on that diagram. We received a comment earlier from Mike Riley, who I see is here with us today. There's a note that says remove stop sign, but then there's a little, I think it's a R1 symbol or something that that is that is a stop sign that will be relocated based on the geometry of that intersection.
Okay, thank you. I did want to clarify that. So my my concerns are threefold. The first is that same intersection. The residents have been expressing concern about pedestrian safety at that intersection for a few months now, and we haven't really gotten any any determination on what can be done here. The the issue for the residents is that that has always been an issue for pedestrians getting across Commercial and heading onto Adams. And I know this is not, this is not the developers issue, but they really would like to see the town address it as part of this project, in particular, as as we put more cars into that intersection and redesign it to make the traffic flow smoother. The concern is that things will get even worse for pedestrians. And I think they're open to to different, whatever suggestions DPW would make, but but what has come up again and again was to add a one additional lighted crosswalk on the on these southeastern portion of Commercial Street so that residents could get across the same way that they could get across Adams. They know the developers agreed to put in a lighted crosswalk there. So I think if we could, if if the board could just make sure that that gets addressed somewhere as part of this project, I think the residents in that area would be very pleased if that could be done. The second one is related to traffic on Morrison and Drinkwater. The the traffic study that was presented said that there would be this project could generate an additional vehicle every two minutes, which would be a level of impact that would not produce a significant increase in motorist delays or vehicle queuing. But that is a neighborhood side street. It's, you know, it's not Adams Street. And I think that the judging that street based on vehicle queuing, it doesn't really get to resident concerns. A neighborhood side street, one car every two minutes is significant. So I'm wondering if anything else can be done in terms of at least traffic calming to make sure that that you know, neighborhood residents are not unduly impacted by this project. And then the last thing that I would raise is the draft conditions. And I know that these came out very late, and I'm sure they will be reworked. But like, one of the things that the that the residents raised was in terms of construction times and whether they could be cut off at 7:00 PM. And that is that did not make it into the draft conditions. So I just want to make sure that those things that were raised do get put back in there. It only refers to the town bylaw, which allows construction to be done until 8:00 PM. And I know that Attorney Palmucci has already said that would be okay. And I just want to make sure that that stuff gets in there. There was also a question about occupancy because the points 61 and 62 in the draft condition seem to indicate that traffic studies would be done at full occupancy levels. But what I heard this board discussing in previous meetings was kind of staggered traffic assessments as the project was was built. And I'm just trying to get some clarification for the residents what we're doing with that. And then the last thing, you know, I think residents will go through these conditions because these are things that greatly affect their quality of life. One that jumped out to me was truck traffic starting at 6:00 AM, including Sundays, which, you know, trucks arriving and unloading at a at a at a dock at six in the morning, especially on a Sunday seems like a nuisance for the neighbors. So if we if we could get those issues addressed, I think I think, you know, that's all I've heard. And and I would just conclude by saying that, you know, these are kind of the last few issues that I have heard. And during this whole process, the the applicant has met with the residents and Attorney Palmucci has has communicated with me many times and and they have they have gone out of their way to address all of the concerns that residents have raised with them. So I just wanted to thank them for that. They've really been, they've really been easy to work with from the residence perspective. So thank you. And if if we could, you know, make sure that these last few conditions are addressed. I I think I think, you know, residents residents are pretty comfortable with this project at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scia. Appreciate Melissa, you take notes on some couple of those draft conditions to potentially be modified?
I did. If I if I could, while I my notes are fresh, if we could run through them very quickly and if I can follow up with clarification. So since the last meeting, the we've gotten past the stop sign issue, the stop sign is saying since the last meeting, the applicant has added a crossing across Commercial Street on the park side of the intersection. And did I hear correctly that you're looking for a third crosswalk?
That that would be ideal. There's still concern about residents that are coming from the southeastern side that don't walk all the way to the farther crosswalk and cross across Commercial there. And it's hazardous now. And, you know, the fear is that as as traffic is heavier and flows more smoothly, it will just get worse.
I would I would default to the to the traffic engineer there at this point. I mean, that that location hasn't been looked at. I know some other locations were suggested by the council that that respectfully didn't work from a from a site perspective and a distance perspective. The pedestrians, there are pedestrians in in that area. There there is not a ton. And and the crossings that have have been provided. You know, I I believe they're sufficient, but I will default to Andrew Ossinalt if we're going to be looking to add a third crossing at this intersection.
Just for clarification, Melissa, is it and Mr. Scia, is it more like a convenience thing that they want a third one just to not walk in another 40 feet? Is that kind of?
I think that's part of it, but I think there's also a lot of kids that cross there from what I understand. And you know, kids, kids do what kids do sometimes. And, you know, if there's heavier traffic flowing, there's just a concern. And again, you know, I want to emphasize, I don't, this is not the developers issue. It's just that the residents would like it addressed now while this intersection is being redone.
Okay.
Just if I may, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
Just so I'm clear, which leg exactly you talking the southern leg of Commercial Street at the Adams Street intersection? Let me just, let me just pull up the the concept plan here as I.
Yeah, almost with the label says probably proposed V VGC typical, almost, give or take.
Where the, yep, where the where the catch basin is coming out there. And with an RFB. We can take a look at at that. We can certainly take a look at that.
Okay. Any other comments you wanted to address, Melissa?
Yes. The comment related to Morrison and Drinkwater is addressed in the draft conditions prior to starting the work. Jeff Dirk's team is going to go out and establish a baseline for Morrison and Drinkwater, and we will have that data. They will go back and do post occupancy monitoring, and then we'll be able to determine what impact, if anything, on that intersection is going to happen from a level of service perspective. Also, what is going to be happening there, there will be a pedestrian crossing and RFB at Morrison Street. So if there's people coming from this particular neighborhood in the park area or south on the south side of Adams Street, they'll be able to navigate safely across. We have very clear sightlines in that particular location. And that will be added as well as part of some of the calming efforts along Adams Street. So that has been addressed both from establishing a baseline and post monitoring. The there was a request from Counselor Sasha related to the work hours. I will default to the board. We typically go with the standard work hours. Oftentimes, people get permission to actually work beyond those hours. That's something that can be granted by the mayor. So I would default to the board. The conditions reflect the standard work hours outlined in the bylaw. In regards to the monitoring, I heard from the board loud and clear at the last meeting, what's going to be happening on the site is we have a program of about I think we're close to 200,000 square feet plus or minus of of building area. They are going to build the 9,000 square foot warehouse, and then they're going to build the U shaped building, and then they're going to monitor. And then we will have monitoring, excuse me, after the construction of the second building as well. So that's basically about about 25% maybe into the project. It's still a little bit early to monitor, but we felt as though that was an appropriate way to break it up. The reality is, is the larger building is probably going to be a single tenant. And if they're going to be occupying the building, it's not going to be, okay, half the people move in, we're going to stop and monitor, and then the other half of people are going to move in. So we will monitor after the construction of about 60,000 or so square feet. We will be able to get our hands around what the site is producing in comparison to what has been projected and then make any adjustments from there, whether it's you know, taking another look at things, taking another look at mitigation, additional signal timing or whatnot. But that is reflected in the draft conditions as discussed at the last meeting. And then as far as the truck traffic times, this is a by right use, and I need to caution the board on over conditioning it. It's it's just, I don't know what else, what else to say in that regards. The applicant has gone above and beyond, in my opinion, from pulling away from the 100 foot buffer zone that that abuts the residence. That's the area. If there was going to be activity in there that would require a special permit, and then we get into heavy conditioning. This is is pretty conditioned as it is, and I would just caution the board on over conditioning things on a by right use. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else raising their hand or anything or the public, anyone that's out there? I didn't see them myself, but
No, no.
All right, I will bring it back to our board unless the applicant has anything else to add on Melissa's comments and Mr. Scia's comments. Nothing, okay. So now I will toss it over to Member McComey. Any questions or comments for the applicant, please?
Thank you. Melissa, could we hear from the peer?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Melissa, could we hear from the peer uh reviewers?
Yes, yes, we have um Phil Paradise. Phil, if you wanna go first. Phil did the stormwater and floodplain review for the town.
Yeah, and what I, what I'm interested, I think what we're all interested, Phil, is um, you know, we, we'd like some confidence that it's gonna work. Um, I, it just, not, not that it's the same project. You know, we went through to high school again, uh, which we shouldn't have had to do. And that was, you know, a big upgrade in terms of drainage. Um, we've had flooding in this area. I know we've had some sewage issues. Um, it looks, it looks like all these enhancements are gonna help the area. So I, I think we just, you know, we, we'd like some confidence. Um, you've taken a look at it. It's very complicated. It's, it's a big area. Uh, we want, we wanna make sure that it's gonna work and add some value.
So, yeah, so um Phil Power is with Beta Group. We've been reviewing this project for quite a while now, and the applicant has provided some major changes that uh we believe will be a benefit to this, to this area. Uh, this is a very large site, and we are very concerned with how it was characterized uh under existing conditions and um, and how it's going to, therefore, what the design goal would be relative to um the uh stormwater runoff recharge and water quality issues uh associated with stormwater runoff. So um they have provided uh this last go around. They did about a number of test pits um uh for the site. So we have an groundwater is, we reviewed a, a number of test pits that were done for the um many, many activities that have been on site and understand that the um, the sound, the site is although uh good amount of it is, is uh has been reworked over the years. A lot of it is still gravel and sand. Uh, so we believe uh the infiltration systems uh should be able to function uh and provide a significant uh benefit. Uh, we are still working with the Conservation Commission relative to a couple of issues. Uh, would like to see a little more infiltration for the roof runoff for the, the U-shaped building and the, that southwest corner. Um, it seems to be uh an opportunity there where there's no automobile shredder um residue uh on site, and uh it would be good opportunity there. And I think we are going to address uh the Conservation Chairman's question about TSS removal uh on some of the water quality units, and we'll review that with the applicant. Um, but overall, I think uh, you know, both the floodplain issue and the uh the, the overall stormwater management system is, is a vast improvement over what was originally submitted.
Okay, thank you.
That assures you. We spent a lot of time to review it, I can tell you that.
Well, we're gonna find out.
Right.
And Melissa, what about the, do we have a traffic consultant too?
Yes, uh Greg is here uh as well.
Greg, sort of same issues, you know, traffic, this is, this is big. Um, we've spent a lot of time working on this and commenting and so on and so forth. So we'd appreciate your comments.
Thank you. For the record, Greg Lucas from Beta Group. I um led the traffic review uh for this project for the town for the board. And so we've had, um, we've had some back and forth with Van Assen Associates um addressing comments on the traffic impact study that was prepared for the site. And then we got into um the various mitigation efforts that are included, that have been included in the prior response to comments and are included in the draft conditions um prepared by the planning department. And we feel that that it's appropriate for um a site of this size and uh for the traffic that it will generate, that we've looked at the potential impact in a lot of different areas. For example, um, the potential impact along um with the signalized intersections at Elm and at, uh, and Adams and Middle Street, uh the connection with the intersection at Church Street, providing some technology to coordinate those intersections, a monitoring program that will evaluate the traffic increase there and potentially look at the appropriateness of updated traffic signal timings, improvements to pedestrian access at those intersections um with new uh ADA compliant ramps. The improvements at Adams and Commercial, which address some of both the safety and the pedestrian access issues um at that intersection. And then the monitoring program um in the neighborhood, which will, again, monitor and determine if there is an impact uh to those streets and react to that and propose improvements that address those impacts. So overall, there are a lot of different components, um, but I think they're, they're appropriate and suitable for the impact of this project. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions on any of those items.
Okay, so I guess one specific question is, why don't we put some of those traffic light improvements in, you know, immediately?
I think that the um there are improvements that could be made. There are improvements that could be made now. You know, there's, there's timing plans that can be updated now. But I think it, it's better, it's better for it to be reactive. It's better for not to make adjustments that have the potential to create some other unforeseen problem and then be chasing that problem, but rather to be reactive to the specific impacts of the site. So that's why I think it's more appropriate to monitor, determine if there are specific impacts from the site, and then make adjustments at that time.
Okay, and, okay, we're doing monitoring.
Can I just clarify? The, the actual physical improvements will be done, though, Member McComey.
Okay.
Yeah, the, all of, all of the mitigation um will be completed. And then there'll be monitoring and then adjusting, cause even, even into connecting the signals at Elm and all th- those will start to create improvements on their own. And then it's, then, I think what Greg is saying is, wait till you know what the cars are doing, and then start tweaking.
Yes, exactly.
Physical improvements will be done.
The, the physical, yes, the physical infrastructure to connect these locations will be done regardless of, you know, regardless of the number of cars that this generates. It's the potential, once that's done, to make further adjustments, which will be triggered by mitigation or by a monitoring, sorry.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, if these are such great improvements, why don't we do them now? But I understand your point about tweaking. And I know, I, I asked the question previously, uh, you know, we were talking about volume and trucks. Are, um, Melissa, are we, are we, or um, Attorney Pal Mucci, are we doing anything in terms of limiting the size of the vehicles that are gonna be allowed on the, on this, on, on this site?
We would ask the board not to do that.
I'm sorry?
We would ask the board not to do that.
Okay, so was, was it discussed among all of our experts here and everything? Um, Greg, for example, did you, did you wanna weigh in on that?
We didn't discuss um restricting any use. I, I would, I would defer to Melissa, but I would expect that whatever is allowed by right would be allowed on this site.
Um, if I may, Member McComey, as a follow-up to um Attorney Pal Mucci and Greg's comments, um there, there, we're not limiting the size of the truck, but we're, we're limiting them in a manner that they, they've told us how many they're gonna have daily. They told us that how many they're gonna have in the peak hour, and they're held to that standard. So the monitoring is not only volume, it's type. So it will distinguish a passenger vehicle from a truck, and they're held to that standard. Um, there's conditions in there that say that they should um plan act, truck activity uh with the tenants to um generate the trucks that they said that they were gonna generate. So plan ahead for that. And also, um, there's very limited room on the site for actual tractor trailers to unload and do tractor trailer activity. Um, and they're prohibited from stacking trucks on site. They're prohibiting from stacking anywhere on Arnold Street, anywhere in Braintree. Um, and they're prohibited from, from idling um on site and anywhere in Braintree. So whoever is going to be in this larger building needs to uh will be aware of those conditions and needs to sort of plan their deliveries so that they're gonna work. They have, um, I believe it's three full-size uh lo- loading bays and then a smaller loading space. So, given the size of the building um and given the amount of docks and the conditions, um also tying the monitoring back to what the projections were, that's pretty controlled. Um, that's pretty controlled. I mean, we have we have several buildings in town that have eleven, twelve, fifteen, far more um loading areas without the conditions. So given the number and the conditions and the tieback, um, I believe it was into, jump in, six in the peak hour and maybe like a hundred over the course of a day or something like that.
Let me um.
Um, so that's what they said was gonna happen. So that's what they need to, to make sure is, is happening um on the site.
Let me just look it up to get the um the actual number.
I think it was six.
It, it sounds about right. I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna guess.
Okay, so, so you feel that we have some controls in place? We're gonna monitor, you know, I'm just you, you know, we just, we just talked about a car wash that can fit a twenty-two-foot vehicle, you know, and Member Grove brought up how are you gonna stack those types of things? I don't know what they have, but you know, what I'm saying simply is that um, we know in advance, and I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna overload the system, either volume and or size of vehicles. So uh I just wanna make sure that we have protection. And we can put back, we can go back and fix things because, you know, when, when it, when it gets bad over there, it's gonna be bad. So I just make sure we have protection.
Yeah, it's probably, and it's probably better and more controlled to restrict by volume than by size.
Okay.
You know, we have, in this case, you know, you stated, we have this spec- expectation. What you've told us, this is how many trucks are going to have. We're gonna hold them to that standard. So I think that's, that's an appropriate and a good, a, a good safeguard for the town.
Okay, um, another question I have, I didn't realize we were gonna have a pedestrian walkway and an overlook site. Um, I guess, I didn't, I didn't know that. So I assume that there's gonna be, you know, protections for pedestrians walking around there. There's gonna be construction going on. Um, I also assume it's gonna be ADA compliant. Right?
Um, I, I, I don't think the River Walk's gonna be operational during construction. I think the plan is to, yeah, Garrett, like, absolutely not. Um, but it is fully ADA compliant. Um, there's parking for it. There's five dedicated parking spaces, and there is um an overlook uh area. So people can either walk down to that area or they can park um and enjoy. It's, it's actually very beautiful down there. Um, and opening up that uh opportunity to the public is, is, is huge.
Um, I hadn't seen that previously. I think, I think that was a good idea. So, okay, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mayor McComey. Uh, Member Downey, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just on that uh same topic, Melissa, uh, or whoever can answer it, the five parking spots, they're up at the top left-hand corner. I'm looking at this color graphic here. Can they, can folks walk from those spots to the River Walk without um going through the property? Is it easy access right where those parking spots are? Do you know, or will be?
The uh River Walk, um, it will be constructed, portions of it will be constructed in the middle of the project to, towards the end of the project. The overlook comes at the end. As far as can they walk, uh, they can walk down the um River Walk Trail, but that goes to the sidewalk. Uh, when it gets further along into the site, and then the sidewalk um goes down to where the entrance is to, it's a raised, it's a raised walkway to go out to the overlook area. So that's how it will work. That's not going to happen. It was sequenced in the construction sequencing to be at the end just for pedestrian safety. That's one of the main reasons. We don't want anything operational, so the site is, is, is complete.
Okay, so if you park in one of those five spaces, you can walk down the sidewalk to the overlook? Is that correct?
Yes, you can, you can walk down the, there's a River Walk stone dust pathway that leads to the sidewalk. And then the sidewalk takes you down the rest of the way. I believe there will be signage that shows you exactly how to go and where to go. Um, that's part of the, the, the River Walk. We'll have signs out on there on the end of the River Walk overlook explaining, you know, what's, what's around you, basically. And there'll be a map at the um park, at the parking lot. There will be a, a trail map to show you.
Okay, so you can actually access the trail or access the River Walk from there without?
Yeah, the trail starts right, it, it, the, if you're parked head-on to the spaces, the trail starts right at the, like, at the nose of the cars. So if you're walking, you can come off the public sidewalk that they're also providing on Arnold Street um and get right on it. So you don't have to, like, walk through, like, a garage or something.
That's what I was wondering. That's what I, that was my question. I wanted to make sure you didn't have to walk through the site.
Yeah, and it's, it's pretty landscaped up in that area too. So it's, it's separated enough um that, that I think it'll be really inviting.
Okay, very good. And what, uh, while we're on this topic, how long before this River Walk is up and running or these trees are planted in, in place, et cetera? Any, what's the timeframe on that?
It'll happen probably um year two, I, I would say is when we'll be working on that to year three. Uh, that would be my estimate, my estimation. Um, with the first year, just starting, you know, down, like you said, at those lower transects on the far side, and then moving up to that other area, we'll start working up there. But it wouldn't be open till the public till it is done, meaning all major constructions over. If someone's line painting, I don't think it's an issue, but no heavy equipment moving around, not, not under construction anymore.
Okay, that's very good. I had one other uh question. Uh, Melissa, you were talking about the um linking up the um the signals with broadband, the radio. Um, and you said that was gonna be done immediately. Did I hear you correctly?
Yeah, all of the, all of the physical improvements in the mitigation plans, let me just go to the conditions just to make sure. Um, I think it's prior to NECO, I think is what I had put in there.
Okay.
Let me just double check here. Um. I have to double check. Um, does anybody know where that is in the conditions? I'm sorry, I.
That's in D, that's in uh fifty-seven D is the uh broadband radio.
Right, but all of the um oh, um, it's fifty-nine. So all the traffic mitigation outlined in condition, it, I left question mark, cause I might renumber and clean up depending what happens. Um, shall be completed to the satisfaction of the department and DPW prior to the in, any, excuse me, prior to the issuance of any certificates for buildings D and E. So the only thing they can build and occupy without doing that mitigation is the nine thousand squi- foot warehouse, which that's not gonna produce anything that's going to rise to a level of mitigation. But all of the physical improvements, the flashing lights, the crosswalks, the, the radio stuff, so everything's talking and working, that will all be done before the U-shaped building and the big building is occupied. So that once they start bringing in people, and then they monitor, as I had mentioned earlier, that you're monitoring your improved network and not your unimproved network, so that you can actually see oh, what did this, does mitigation help? Do we need to do additional timing and, and that type of stuff?
Okay, this is uh, this has really come a long way. Um, so I wanna thank everyone for their, for their efforts on this. I think um when we first looked at this, it was, it wasn't uh clear to me about a lot of the stuff. And as Member McComey said, the, the overlook, things like that are gonna be real uh value-add for the community. I live in the neighborhood too, so I will definitely uh, you know, enjoy this. Um, so thank you very much, Attorney Pal Mucci and, and others, and Melissa especially. Thank you. I have nothing further.
All right, I can remember Downey, uh, Member Grove?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lucas, are there any general restrictions according to trailer size, like, you know, nothing over forty feet in the community, or, you know, restricted to certain roads?
No, there aren't any.
No, there aren't any, there aren't any specific restrictions on, on trailer size.
So, you're saying that a forty-foot trailer will, will be able to navigate that area as well as a fifty-three foot?
Yes.
A tandem's allowed?
I don't believe tandems are allowed.
Off the highway?
Off the highway. And, and in fact, I don't believe tandems are even allowed in the high, on the highway in eastern Massachusetts.
Okay. Uh, what is the weight differential between a fifty-three and a forty footer?
That I'm not aware.
Because, uh, has, has any big consideration been given to redoing the roadway to, to, uh, make sure that you're okay in carrying the load for these larger trailers?
We didn't review. I don't know if anyone in the applicant team reviewed the pavement structure on our, on Arnold Street, Arnold Grove.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, any answer to that question that Member Grove brought up?
So, um, well, our, our street is going to be reconstructed with heavy-duty pavement.
Okay.
Is it going to be constructed sufficiently to carry big loads?
Yes, it's ha- is specifically designed to have heavy-duty pavement as well as we, we have a sheet in our joint designated, the site driveway is actually, um, going to be paving with heavy-duty pavement for tractor-trailer use. There's two different pavement on the site. One is for the regular parking spot or, or lower user parking lot. And the site driveway itself is, um, classified as heavy-duty pavement with thicker asphalt on it.
And, uh, I'd like to know what the capacities are, the capacities of the trailers and the capacity of the roadway.
Again, the he-
They don't have to be, you don't need to come up with an answer right this second.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I'll sign, Mr. Grove?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Member Kent?
I have no questions.
Okay, uh, and back to myself. Um, so I guess the only, I have a couple of questions. Uh, but the major thing is, uh, and it could be in regards to, uh, Attorney Palmucci or Melissa. So, the phasing of the project, uh, as, as it stands would be, uh, the mediation, the kind of recharge of the site, obviously, number one. Uh, and then number two would be the warehouse, since that kind of is closest to like the number one, uh, you know, kind of delineation of the one through twenty-nine, whatever we had for the delineations. And then you do the U-shaped building a- as, as like a phase. One is the, the site, phase two would be building warehouse and then building the U-shape as well as, as a phase two? Or is it gonna be independent of one another where warehouse is built first and then the U-shaped built is second?
As far as, uh, from the, what I have, well, we've asked them for, there is a sequencing plan that's, that's very, uh, environmental, I'll call it. Um, we have also asked them to just prepare like a typical construction, uh, schedule that will be submitted. Um, obviously, depending on the, the time that, um, they stop the, the project. The other thing that we have in here, uh, given the complexity of the project, we have built in for an independent monitor, working for the town, working for, uh, conservation and, uh, myself, uh, planning, uh, staff to go out and do inspections twice a week, uh, excuse me, twice a month and to sort of assist the staff in, um, in making sure that subsurface things are also inspected as well. The LSP is gonna also be submitting reports, uh, twice a month based on his stuff. So, there'll be, there'll be constant, there'll be a construction schedule. I'm sure it might, you know, we even have built in there if things change. They can amend it, you know, we'll be notified of inspections. Um, and I think that there is going to, obviously, you know, this thing's gonna, um, you know, I kinda said it's gonna turn into, you know, it's gonna kind of be a work in progress type thing before they actually start building the buildings. So, um, but the, the smaller building, the nine thousand and the U-shaped, from the traffic perspective is phase one and then phase two would be building the building, uh, the larger building.
Okay, so, so the, so phase one site, phase two is the U-shape and then, or, or the warehouse is phase two? So, I was just confused on.
They're gonna start their remediation work and then they will start building, uh, the, the nine thousand square foot building and the U-shaped building. And then they will, once that is all done, they'll have the green, the green shaded area and the plan that Sean Hardy had up. And then they're gonna, I mean, I don't wanna speak for George, but I don't think he's gonna build that big building until he gets a tenant. And, you know, I think that's the plan and hopefully, once everyone sees the awesome improvements in the front of the site, that that kind of falls in, falls into place.
Yeah, I guess I'm just-
We will get a construction schedule, uh, that's included in the conditions.
Okay, that's, that's the biggest thing for me is just trying to figure out, you know, be- between the U-shaped building, the warehouse, that, that's a, a lot of areas building. Um, you know, and then the other, other buildings out front are, are much smaller. So, I guess I'm, if I'm looking at just an area-wise, it's almost like those two buildings are ninety percent of the project, you know, just because they're so large in scale.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just curious if those two buildings are put in, we're already almost at our threshold, even with the phasing of, with, if, are those built first? That, that's what I'm trying to get at is how, which one is-
Small, there's one building that's staying. It's tiny, the one out front. Then the nine thousand and the U-shaped, from a building perspective, is phase one. And then phase two, from a building perspective, would be the big building.
Oh, okay.
So, we're not gonna have all three like under construction at once and then they failed and we're like, oh, God, what do we do?
Yeah, okay. So, the warehouse is actually technically last. That's when?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So, Member Baker, if I may.
Of course.
The, the intent is to work from Arnold Street into the site and, and-
Okay.
With all of the, you know, granted Garrett said that some of the remediation that's gonna happen along the riverbank, but as far as construction of buildings goes, they're gonna come in, they have to bring the utilities in from Arnold Street and it, it, you know, it's gonna be a, a stepwise progress marching into the site from that point. So, it's gonna be out front by the Arnold Street as far as some of that regrading, some of the restoration that goes there, the construction of that front U-shaped building and then move into the site for those next phases.
Okay, got it. That, thanks for the clarification. Appreciate that. Um, yeah, so now in regards, I guess, to the phasing, I guess, when, when the overall project is complete, I, I saw in your traffic volume comparison that we're at a fourteen-point-eight percent increase and fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. So, I, I guess the, the warehouse to me is kind of the, the small fries, even though it's a larger footprint, it's, it's small in regards to amount of occupants, at least I would think. So, I'm just kind of curious of your take on, you know, even without the warehouse, what are we potentially gonna be? I think that was what Member McComme was getting at with the phasing is, uh, how do we predict? Like, i- is, can we look at something that could be, we, we see it as an A, B, and C with A is, or, or phase one is these three buildings and here is what the differential will be without traffic? And then with the warehouse, it's fourteen-point-eight percent increase? Is there any way to see like a table of, what are we gonna get phase one? You know, what is the increase potentially going to be? And then with the overall phase, with everything all complete, we're at the fourteen-point-eight. I'm just kind of curious of is, i- is there a big change in, in the percentage of increase for the area with the phase one only doing like the three buildings on Arnold?
Um, so I, I did not break it down by, um, by construction phase. Um.
Okay. Yeah, I just kinda could resist myself, Melissa, but gonna see it as a-
Well, we did break it, we broke it down-
We broke it down by-
Monitoring perspective, though.
Okay.
That, that's what we, so sort of my takeaway from the last meeting was the board is really concerned about monitoring. Um, you know, I, I still think that we're probably monitoring a little bit too soon, but that's okay. Um, because we can, we can break it up. So, if we count building, um, if we count the three smaller buildings that are closer to Arnold Street, they have, they have to do monitoring after those are done.
Yep.
Um, and that represents thirty percent of the building area, but we're like sixty percent into the traffic volume. Well, then we have a problem. And I think that it, it, yeah, at that point, we would say, okay, we've gotta, we've gotta think about this. Uh, George, you know, maybe the big building is, is two tenants and we put, you know, we build the building and we occupy this, you know, so we've gotta-
Okay.
We will, we will be able to, to determine, um, based on monitoring after those, those three. And it's, unfortunately, it's not like they're the same exact size, but it's like, you know, you, you can't say build half a building. You know, you've gotta, you've gotta allow people to be able to build buildings and occupy them. And, you know, based on the fact that, I mean, the, the big building is so much bigger, um, compared to the other ones that, um, you know, we likely won't see that much of an impact in the beginning. Um, and, and hopefully that, that will, will, will work out well and, and lend itself to the construction of the larger building. But if we get, if we do see something that isn't matching up, okay, well, this is only thirty percent of the building and then we'll be able to take a pause and, because then what will happen is they'll, they'll have too much volume and they don't, they're, they're not gonna want that too because they're gonna be on, on the hook. If, if you, if you produce above and beyond and you start to deteriorate your projected level of services, that, that, there's gonna be issues and, and those are things that Georgia's, is not gonna want to happen. So, um, I think that we have a very conservative monitoring program and I, that's what the board wanted and, and that's what we have.
Okay, I, I was just making sure that, you know, just the phasing of the, it's all aligned with the traffic. I was, I was getting a little nervous when I saw the fourteen-point-eight with the overall.
Yeah.
In place that things will be, you know, looked at throughout the process, then that's, you know.
And I think the, the remediation is like a construction phase, but it's not a traffic-producing phase.
Right.
So, I'm, I kind of separated the traffic out into phase one and phase two, as described this evening. And then that other stuff will be happening, but it's not gonna produce vehicles. So, uh, it's kind of ongoing.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Uh, I, I have no more further questions. Anyone else on the board, uh, have any, uh, extra thoughts after the conversation we just had?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, um, so Melissa, since the neighborhood brought up the construction hours, um, do, if we have issues, yeah, uh, can we adjust those? Um, you know, I, I know Attorney Palmucci's familiar with neighborhood reaction, but do we have the ability to make adjustments if needed?
Again, the, the, the condition is written, says that they can work, uh, the bylaw hours, which are, are seven AM to eight PM. If the board o- wants to restrict that to seven and, and the applicant agrees, that's between the board and the applicant. The work hours in enforcing that and regulating that is, that's really the building inspector, um, that oversees that. The, the request to work outside of those hours is made to the mayor. It's really not the planning board. And again, um, you know, we, we typically go with what the bylaw hours are. Again, if the board wants to do something else, I would default to the board members. And, um, I think Council Sasha said, um, Mr. Palmucci was in agreement to that. I, I haven't heard that myself. So, if that's the case, um, let's, let's hash that out now, please.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating for it, but I'm just saying that these things happen. And I just wanna make sure, again, we have some flexibility. I don't know, Member Grove might have some comments, looks like.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if the condition were written out to allow you to, to have meetings after the fact if there's community, uh, disruption, you know, if you're receiving complaints and so on and allowing you to adjust the hours. You, you don't have to adjust the hours right now, but you're right the, right the condition to allow you to come back after the fact.
I, I just, but what are we, if you can work between seven AM and eight PM, what, what do you mean by a complaint?
I'm not talking about an individual complaint, but I'm talking about, I don't know how you're gonna define it, but, you know, if there's, if you have multiple people, you know.
The planning, that's what I mean. The complaint isn't to the planning board. The planning board's not-
No, the planning board is, Melissa, because this is our project and we are approving it.
No, respectfully, the building inspector regulates the complaints from-
Building inspector regulates the zoning laws.
Exactly, and the zoning bylaw dictates the law hours.
If we have a condition that the applicant has agreed to, then we can work with him and deal things out.
Well, I, I think we're making a problem out of something that's not a problem as of yet. You're, you're, you're talking hypotheticals, which is kind of a tough thing to do, you know?
Yes, I agree, Mr. Chairman, to some extent, but the thing is, if you don't make some concessionary plans, you're never gonna be able to deal with things that are not presently on the table.
Well, I, I think the same thing we're doing with the tr- the traffic is that we're monitoring things. So, I think as the project goes on, if you're getting feedback from the, the general patrons, the people or the neighbors who live locally, then things can be addressed with the building department to then li- limit hours, I think, if there is a noise variance or something that they are creeping up upon. Th- th- that's my own opinion. Um, I, R- Russ Frosberg is a great building inspector. He's one of the best in the state. So, he's very on top of things. Um, so if something happens on site, he's gonna be actively on it to, to change up the dynamic if there is something that does arise.
Yeah, that, that's my point.
You know, like, u- us as a board, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Uh, Mr. Grove, is that you, you know, wanna put a condition in place that kind of starts off the foot right now, but the problem is that we don't know what the construction is gonna be like. So, start and put restrictions on someone that hasn't even started construction, it's kind of-
It's not a matter of restrictions. It's just a matter of an avenue to, to traverse if something happens.
But the planning board-
May I interject?
Yeah.
May I interject? I, um, I, I would just suggest, um, to address this concern. We, we started, we started this, uh, project, I wanna say five years ago, as a ninety-eight unit townhouse and we had a community meeting, um, and it was not well received by the neighbors. Uh, at every step along the way, we've done everything that the neighbors have asked of us. Uh, it's Mr. Lang's intention to be a good neighbor on the site. I can assure you, we're gonna be a better neighbor, uh, even during construction than the concrete plant was. Um, if an issue, uh, develops, uh, we will, we will work with the counselor, uh, and the building inspector to address it. If, if after seven PM is causing, uh, too much concern in the neighborhood, then we would, we would gladly, uh, restrict it back to seven. But I, but I'd ask that we'd be given the opportunity to, to be good neighbors during the construction process first. And if something, um, and if something needs to be addressed afterwards, I, sorry, low battery. Um, I, I commit to the board, uh, and as, as Mr. Lang, that we, we're happy to work with the, with the town on that.
Yeah, I'm sure Attorney Palmucci, that, you know, you have a point of, uh, contact, the neighbors already do, since you already had multiple neighborhood meetings. So, if there is something that arises, you'll be getting notified or Mr. Lang will get notified right away that there's some issue that's, that's been happened.
I frequently speak to the neighbors, uh, around the site currently. If something's happening on the site, they usually, uh, call me or George directly and we usually resolve the issue. So, it's been a good relationship that we like to keep with the neighbors.
Mr. Palmucci, could you put that in writing and include it in the record?
I'm happy to send an email to, uh, to, uh, staff that suggests that as well.
Yeah, it would just be-
The favorable Palmucci guarantee, is it enough? All right, I'll give you the, the Palmucci, the Palmucci guarantee in writing. I want one of those too.
Uh, any more, uh, comments, Mr. Grove?
Oh, sure.
Uh, Mayor McComme, anything to add as well or?
No, 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 that's, I think, I, I think that's fair and, and, um, um, I, I appreciate that. So, I just wanna make sure, you know, we heard it from the neighbors and, um, you know, we just all need to be responsive. So, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Um, so, Melissa, anything else to add, uh, discussion-wise or we?
Um, I'd like to cover a few things just to clear, uh, make the record clear, if I may. Um, just following up, um, to George, um, and, and Attorney Palmucci, um, we do have some existing bills for peer review services and we will have, uh, another small bill coming based on the fees for this meeting. Uh, I'm sure there might be a little bit of wrap-up as we tighten up some of the minor, uh, plan revisions moving forward. So, uh, for the record, I will be reaching out to George for approximately another nine thousand dollars. So uh for the record, I will be reaching out to George for approximately another nine thousand dollars. I need to just double check and see what we have in our account here. Um, and George has been great about providing those funds all along, so I, I don't anticipate any issues with that. Um, in regards to the uh one minor revision uh to the conditions. Um, that I had mentioned earlier from the town engineer and I had also spoken to uh Jeff Dirk, who works with Andrew over at V I A. And that's in condition, condition fifty-seven. I use the abbreviation APS, which is for an actuated pedestrian signal. And I used uh the wrong abbreviation and the wrong terminology there. It's actually gonna be the RRFB, which is the flashing one. Um, that everybody wants. Um, so that will be revised in condition uh fifty-seven. Uh, noted again by both town engineer and um the applicant's traffic engineer. Um, there was one other thing, um. In the conditions, I just wanna note, um. Condition number, um, condition number forty-six, there was a request from Counsel Sasha for some screening. Uh, for three people in particular and we've included. Um, typically what we do, especially in this particular situation, Attorney Pal Mucci's gone on record several times. This is gonna be nothing but a massive improvement and I, I really can't um stress that enough. Um, two people on Adam Street, one eleven and one seventeen have both requested uh screening. I'm not sure if they've seen the landscaping plans. Again, these people have not reached out to me. This is all coming to me, um, uh via the, the counselor. Um, there's extensive, I mean, it's beyond extensive between Garrett's restoration plantings. And then what's been proposed on the landscaping plan, um, that is the hundred-foot Bafa area to the residential district. Um, I wanted to note that for the record, and then the other resident was at Eight Lemoine, so. Um, we will go out and take views and whatnot, um. And, and make some suggestions on, on what should be provided. That's gonna be prior to occupancy, I, in this particular case. Um, again, given such a huge improvement, what is actually gonna be needed, I think should be evaluated. Once the buildings are constructed, that way the app, the property owners can actually point out what they're concerned about, what views they're trying to screen. And again, the, the screening needs to be um due to. A negative visual impact, whether it's a loss of screening or something like that. So again, the, the, the plans that we have in place, uh, and that, that Georgia's has submitted a, from a landscaping perspective is, is great, so. Um, we will deal with that. Um, if we cannot reach any resolution with these abutters. Um, this is something that's in the planning board's jurisdiction. Um, we will kick it up to the planning board uh to weigh in if, if we can't. Um, resolve that. Um, and I think. Uh, I think that might be it. Um, I don't know if any of the members have any questions on the conditions. Um, they are extensive. Um, and in, in regards to condition sixty-five, which is the truck traffic. The condition states no truck traffic is permitted to access or exit the Riverside Business Park between nine PM and six AM, Monday through Sunday. Um, that's what the staff has drafted. Again, this is not a use special permit. And I would caution the board on overly conditioning the use. Um, and that's basically um all the staff has this evening. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, Attorney Pal Mucci, are you okay with all the draft conditions? Anything you wanna change or edit, or are you okay with everything produced with Melissa's comments?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'll entertain a, a motion if there's nothing else on the um. Anyone else raising their hand, I'll entertain a motion to uh approve with the draft conditions um within the one that Melissa. Uh, has now modified.
If, yeah, if you can just, in, in the, actually in the front cover of the draft conditions, I have a, a recommendation. And if, if the board is so inclined to vote on this tonight, which would be amazing, um, if it's subject to that, so we have the draft conditions. We have the follow-up minor items uh from the peer review council. Cheese weighed on, weighed in on those this evening. Again, it's just. Housekeeping types of activities. Um, and then I had asked, um. Counsel, uh, Attorney Pal Mucci, uh, we have fourteen days to file the decision, so the question is. Are they comfortable with just the fourteen days to get all these materials in? They all need to be submitted before we file the decision, so I can update all the dates and fill in all the question marks and the things in red. Or if they don't think fourteen days is enough time to include in that motion, an extension of the time to file the decision to thirty days.
Mister Chairman, I thought there was still some data that was supposed to be coming back. Like the information I asked about the trucks. I'd make a motion to continue this until the next hearing.
Well, I think, I thought the, uh, the answer that uh Mister Mann uh produced at the Arnold is gonna be upgraded for. The truck traffic, so you want uh clarification on the Adam Street?
Yeah.
Um, but uh, I, I think.
I made a motion.
Right, um, but I think it is what Attorney Pal Mucci and Mister Mann said, it, for, for them. Uh, I thought it was a little tough to predict types of trucks that are gonna be having the actual new structures that. Correct in my assumptions, uh, Attorney Pal Mucci, or?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, so to, so to your point, Member Grove, it's, it's tough to, I guess, plan for something that's unplanned, um, I guess.
No, to my point, sir, is you're not gonna have a roadway trashed in two years. Because they're overloading it. Or the, the track, they're using fifty-three foot tractors and can't navigate the roadway without messing up the whole traffic flow.
We haven't, we haven't had any comments from the town engineer about concerns about upgrading pavement. We haven't had anything um from the peer review in regards to that and. Um, respectfully, um, uh, the, you know, as Pam, Attorney Pal Mucci noted. We've been working on this for a really, really long time and um this project is. Um, ready to be moved and I respectfully request the board. Um, if you'd like a condition, Member Grove, we can include something else, um, but we, we need to, we need to move on this this evening.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Um, Mister Mann said earlier was heavy duty pavement. Um, so we have incorporated into our design. H twenty loading, which is tractor-trailer um traffic. So we, we have incorporated that into our design.
The tractor-trailer loading is gonna vary depending on the size of the tractor, no?
No, H twenty loading means tractor-trailer loading, which is what allows them to travel on the road. At a certain weight per axle, and we have incorporated that into our design to, on the. On the Arnold Street approach, so we have incorporated the maximum load that is allowed. By a truck traffic to travel on this roadway.
Okay.
I would also note that uh the current use is a, is a cement, is a cement plant. You're talking about heavy duty vehicles coming and going from that, that property. Um, with loads of concrete and debris and so it's. It would suggest will be a lighter use.
Says though, there's more wheel dissipation for the weight on a, on a cement truck. Cement truck usually has a double up rear axle or, or better. And it's not, not nearly fifty-three feet long.
No, but it's the way, it, it is, the H twenty loading is what the standard is for engineering.
Fine.
Eight per axle based on the number of tires and we are accommodating that and we are one hundred percent certain that we are meeting that. Loading rate and we are in compliance.
It's what per axle? Eight tons?
The term is called H twenty loading. It's, it's the length of the um, the, the vehicle. Based on a, a per square foot axle. That's what they're allowed to travel on, on the roadway, so. We are meeting what they're allowed to travel on, on the roadway in the design on Arnold Street.
What comes down to the weight on the roadway per tread or total capacity.
Member Grove, would you want the, the, the town engineer to review something and get back to you with documentation, because I think this is. Uh, you know, something that they're, they're supplying everything with their site to hold anything up to a fifty-three foot truck.
And if, if I, if I may add that Arnold Street is a private street that we are paving and we don't want that to be deteriorated. We own that street.
Right, now what about Adam Street?
I would just remind, or that this is a, this is a by right, this is a by right.
That is built to, to withstand tractor-trailer load on it.
I'm just trying to find out what the loading is.
Is that something, Melissa, that the town engineer could uh e- emailing documentation to Member Grove to satisfy his needs? Uh, there's really nothing, a, a condition can really be put forth to, unless we want to verify the weight, but Adam Street is a main, a main street. I, I would assume that it is adequate, but.
We have reviewed the number of trucks. We know what's there for loading docks and, and again, this issue. Things like this have come up on other projects and the, this, this, it just, it hasn't been raised. There has been no concerns. We have. Uh, Greg is here uh tonight. Unfortunately, the town engineer uh had a prior commitment and couldn't make it, but. Uh, if that was something that Jim Ossinalt and John, that, they would have raised it. I mean, they, we've, we've, we've got a very vibrant, full. Uh, mitigation package that has been vetted, uh, God, at least three times at this point, and that has never been raised. Um, and I, I know Jim Ossinalt and, and if, if he had a concern with that. It would have been something to add um additional uh pavement or redo certain pavement in particular areas. That, that just hasn't come up. Um, if you want to include in the monitoring. You know, we could have them look at the condition of the road and then monitor the condition of the road when they do the volume monitoring. We could do something like that, but there's a lot of trucks that use that, those corridors, so. Uh, there's really, I, I don't know how you would differentiate who, who, who did what, if there was any kind of, of, um. You know, deterioration.
H twenty load is mass, mass highway standard load that they use on their roadways, so. That's what Mass Highway uses. That's their standard for heavy duty is H twenty. That's what the bridges are spec to and that's what their roadways are spec to for, for heavy duty loads.
And there's hundreds, um, sixteen thousand pounds per wheel load for hundred twenty load.
One hundred and twenty thousand pounds total.
Per wheel. Is the point no per wheel?
Right.
Depends on how many wheels the vehicle has.
Yeah. Hundred and twenty per wheel.
Is there something you would wanna add, Member Grove, in a condition or touch with one bite?
No, I think the weight's taken care of, I, I'd still like to look at the length, but. I don't think Adam Street is really configured to be swallowing fifty-three foot trailers.
Well, then this is something that'll be monitored in, in, in the construction of the buildings as well, with, with size of trucks and in that nature and who's inhabiting the building.
And how's that gonna be monitored with uh any ability to do anything? If it's not conditioned out.
Well, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Pal Mucci, but the, if you hypothetically had a fifty-three foot trailer. That's gonna be for the warehouse use, correct? Not for the other uses?
Correct.
And, and that's, and that's the last building to go in, so we're gonna be seeing the traffic flow, patterns, everything with the site. As it's standard, it's being constructed, and then when the warehouse gets there, they'll more than likely, as, as, as we know, will have a tenant. Uh, to fill that more than likely, um, and then build that building, you know, for the tenant use, so. I guess we'd almost have our answer with what type of uh trucks the uh proposed tenant potentially will have. And I'm not sure if that comes back to us, Melissa, or there's something that just. Uh, just kinda gets passed away. I'm not sure how that works. With, with a new tenant, if they, they build a warehouse and have a fifty-three foot trailer, it's really out of our purview. Is that kinda how it works?
Um, I'd have, I don't have the, the plan in front of me. What's the depth of the, of the loading dock? I mean, these aren't, these aren't, you know, this is not a, a loading activity type of site. I mean, it's really not. Orientated like that, like I had mentioned earlier, um, we've got buildings that have twelve, fifteen. Uh, twenty-something, well, I mean, this is, this just isn't, it just doesn't have that.
Yeah, there's only four loading bays. What's the length of those loading bays?
I think Shawna Chi is looking at that right now for us.
And, and I don't have the plan in front of me, so I will speak to it, and she is looking at it while I'm speaking to it. But to have a, a, maybe a couple of tractor-trailer trucks. Come around that warehouse building and back into two loading bays. It, it, that is not the intent to have this site be.
Yeah.
Trailer trucks all day long, loading and unloading. It's, it's, you know, the. The front U-shaped building is contractor base. There's some office space and then that back warehouse building has a, you know, I'll, I'll say a handful of. Tractor-trailer loading bays that are designed to back in and load. That's not what this traffic is designed to do.
Thank you. Uh, Member Grove, anything else to add, or, or, or is that, answer some of your questions?
He said, uh, Mister Mann was looking at the size of the loading bay.
Okay, for the U-shaped building, the loading space is forty-six and a half feet long.
Okay.
And that's comprised of the brain tree zoning.
Okay.
And I don't have that label on the warehouse building. It's, it's approximately the same size and in terms of length. But it's actually wider and I also want to, um. Point out that early on, we submit a truck turning template exhibit.
Yep.
That demonstrate tractor-trailer can come in from Iron Street into the site and circularly around the entire site.
What size truck are we using for your demonstration?
That WB fifty.
Fifty, but your, your loading docks will only could uh accommodate forty-seven, forty-six? Did you say what?
Well, there is enough space for the cab. You know, the, the cab to be. Basically, the, the loading space is long enough for the, for the um cargo cab to be there. And the, the cab will be extending out a little bit and there is enough space for it.
And WB, WB reveal, um, refers to wheelbase, not length of cab, so, you know. The length of the tractor-trailer truck is shorter than the, what the wheelbase is, so.
The, the WB fifty is a forty-two and a half foot trailer.
Right, so there is plenty of, there is ample room and, and that's, I, I guess, thank you, Greg. That says there's ample room for these loading bays to accommodate tractor-trailer trucks. As we are proposing.
And I, I would say that there is a reason the Braintree zoning by law specifies specific loading space. On your bylaw that we are complying with.
Yes, I, I understand, but I mean, if you have done all your configurations and planning. Around a forty-two and a half foot trailer. Then why should you be allowed to have a fifty-two, fifty-three foot trailer on site?
Yeah, we're gonna have a response to that, or no?
Hey, other than we are meeting the requirements for the required loading bay. Spaces and the amount of loading bays, I, I don't know how else to respond to that.
From our perspective, where the, the town sets the rules and the developer has to follow the rules. We follow the rules, which are the ordinances. The assumption is. That we meet the standard.
Right. But when you come out and give all your good faith projections to us. And determine it on a forty two and a half foot trailer. How can we? Have any assurance that a fifty three foot trail is not gonna just jam things up everywhere?
Well, I would suggest that if that's a concern, then the ordinance should be changed to not allow fifty three foot trailers in this in this zoning. Or to change the the length and of loading days. We've complied with everything that the town has on the books about it. So that's why I I would suggest we should be allowed to have it.
No, I I don't agree. If you're providing me with information that isn't pertinent. To the what you want. Then that's basically not being very forthright. I'm sure it wasn't intentional, and I'm not accusing you of anything like like that. But I just can't. Go along for the ride.
I if I may, member Grove. Ask a question, are you concerned with internal movements on the property? Or are you concerned?
I'm I'm concerned more with the streets.
Okay, so that might go towards the traffic engineer. You know, I I. As an engineer, I generally say that we meet the minimum, but I I I tend to think that. Our traffic engineer is going to tell you that he would meet those. You know. Wider ranging things. And hopefully that. They can do that.
I guess if if you'd excuse me, I I just. I I'm not quite. I I guess I'm not quite. Understanding what. What it is that I can provide you. Counsel in Grove, I I like.
Well, I'm being told that your projections were based on a forty two and a half foot trailer, but. You want to be able to have a fifty three foot trailer. They. You don't want to have any limitations on your size. And I. Where all your projections and all your data is based on a lot smaller vehicle. I'm not real willing to go along.
If I can jump in for a second, I don't I don't think we've made any real projections. They've they've designed. The loading bays to meet the zoning by law requirements. And again, she, if I could just clarify.
Loading base, Melissa, it's the streets.
We.
Right, but we don't. We don't. We don't have any restrictions on tractor. We have no restrictions, and I've written pretty much every decision in this town for almost. Twenty years. We have never put in restrictions on the size of the trucks because of the streets. We restrict the size of the trucks respectfully because the site can't handle it. That's why we make those restrictions. There are there are truck routes in that area. They traverse Elm Street all the time. We have all the. Things going down to Sitco carrying the fuel. There's a lot of commercial uses. We have the school buses stored next door. We have massive tractor trailers that come in with all of the different things that go over to means precast. There has been no dialogue whatsoever from any of the town staff related to a concern about the size of the trucks.
Twenty years, the truck size have increased. So I mean. Those were all preexisting uses and in that context. We're dealing with a new use.
Respectfully, there there have been new uses in this community over the last twenty years. There have been several. There have been several. I I just. Getting into restricting, we we've we've gone down this road before on restricting. Things on the streets and, you know, unless there's an intersection that. You know, we have some some geometry demonstrating that a truck can't navigate through there. I I don't think it's appropriate to condition something that hasn't been. Demonstrated as not being able to work.
If they choose to go back and demonstrate that everything functions with a fifty three footer. I'm okay.
But I think to to your appointment with Grove is that you're not worried about the site. You're worried about Adam's Street. So it's kind of. So at that point, for them to show a fifty three footer, it doesn't really matter because all you care about is Adam's Street.
And respectfully, we have made.
And the turning.
Respectfully, in 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 regards to Adam's Street, the town engineer. Myself and Greg Lucas, we're doing traffic calming there. We're shrinking the width of the road. We're putting in a bike lane. We're trying to. So if if there was a concern that it couldn't handle a truck, we wouldn't be minimizing what was there. Again, this just this this hasn't been raised respectfully in the last five years.
For whatever reason.
So if you have concern about the truck being turning in into the site from Adam's Street. We are more than happy to provide a turning template for you to show the. The truck can come in from Adam's Street into our street and into the site and get back out. But I mean, for for Adam's Street itself. It's a town role. We have no control of that.
From from the applicant's point of view, I I I appreciate member gross concern. Town of Braintree has a lot nicer roads than we do here in the city of Quincy, but you want to keep it that way. My my concern on behalf of Mr. Lang is that. Ultimately. What would the remedy be if? Say, we looked into it in in the Arnold Street would be impacted. I mean, ultimately. What's the remedy that we that will be forced upon one particular applicant?
I I again, I think, you know, and I I think maybe. Council Palucci is aware of this and and maybe some other folks that are here with us this evening, but we've gone down the road before. About restricting. Truck traffic and and certain areas and. We were sued and we didn't win. We were sued by our budding communities because we were saying that certain trucks couldn't be on certain roads, and that was forcing trucks to go in 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 other places and whatnot.
It was forced you to go into the communities. Which is completely different from what we're doing. Safety here.
I I just respectfully at this, you know, again, we've got multiple traffic professionals that have looked at this project and. You know, in addition to Greg Lucas and Andrew Alson, you know, Jeff Dirk, I just, he is, you know. Jeff Dirk is the the cream of the crop when it comes to traffic, and he has been working with us. For for years, and this is just everything that we've raised. They've addressed everything that we've talked about. They revised. It's just it hasn't come up. It 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 hasn't been raised by any of the traffic professionals that have been looking at this, and I just. Respectfully, I'm 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 asking if there's something that you want in a condition. To be able to try to monitor something, but to 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 Phil Baker's point. I mean, I don't know how you're going to monitor what truck was going where and who did what damage and. You know, the wear and tear on on streets, you know, all over, all over town that that happened, you know, continually. I just. This project is 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 ready to move forward. We need to get this site cleaned up. We need to get the the crap out of there, and we need to get this producing something that's beneficial to the community. This is an excellent project. And Mr. Lang has gone above and beyond to try to work with the town. And we we are. We are ready to move forward this evening respectfully, member Grove.
And it's a very good project, but there's no reason. To cut off the legs of your citizens. They're living there. They have some rights. They don't need to be impacted adversely. Mr. Lucas. You've been very quiet through all this. Do you have anything to? To chime in on?
I I'd like to try to try to try to summarize this and and. And maybe maybe summarize some of the points that have been made. On both sides. So. Mr. Grove, you're concerned about the loading of larger trucks.
And the turning.
Okay, well, let's start. Let's let's start with the loading. I don't want to. I want to kind of break it down. So the loading on Adam's Street and Arnold Street, correct? I guess the loading on all town streets, but let's let's specifically talk about Adam's Street. Fifty three foot trailers are allowed by right on Adam's Street today, correct?
I guess, if you would say so.
I I I believe that's true unless there's some specific restriction. Those trailers are allowed on on roads in the Commonwealth, short of a a complete truck restriction.
Yes, there there is no. There is no truck restriction on Adams.
There are industrial facilities on Adam's Street today. I don't know what type of trucks they're using, but I know that there's. A large precast facility there that's obviously trucking in heavy. Supplies, heavy equipment. Using Adam's Street.
Right.
So so from that standpoint, we know that that. Loading, that capacity for heavy vehicles exists today.
Right. So I I agree with that context in the context of it being an HP fifty.
And and so because of because of that, from my perspective.
Mr. Lucas, can I?
Yes, sir.
As for the applicant. The existing site is an existing concrete plant that has not. Been. Decommissioned. So tomorrow. Concrete trucks could be loaded and. Sent out the door on that site. So I I would like to point that out on what would would be allowed on that site.
So that's another use that has been using these roadways.
Yes.
With heavier vehicles, although they aren't fifty three foot trailers, I think the the weight capacity is likely similar. So we know that, and and that's why it isn't something that we questioned in our peer review. Because we know that Adam's Street allows and accommodates these vehicles today by right.
Right. And then I agreed, like I said, the HP fifty, it's fine. So the weight's really not. A concern at this point.
And then the concern about Arnold Street, we know that they're reconstructing Arnold Street as Mr. Man and Mr. Hardy. Had had explained with heavy duty pavement, H twenty loading. So we know that the reconstructed Arnold Street will. Allow the capacity of those larger vehicles.
Right. But what I'm saying is that all their. Their. Turning devices and everything. Were done with a forty two foot trailer and not a fifty three.
Well, I think as Mr. Man said, he he would be willing to provide a new plan showing the fifty three foot truck going into the site.
Right. Now, if that's the case, then I. I go back to my motion. On Mr. Lucas.
And I I believe that the, you know, we're talking about the loading bays and the the length of the loading bays. I believe from looking at the plan and perhaps Mr. Man or Mr. Hardy can confirm this. The loading bays on the warehouse building are slightly longer and could accommodate a longer trailer. So from my perspective, the one missing piece here is if the previous exhibits showed a WB fifty. Traversing the site, then then we just need to confirm that 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 the larger vehicle fifty three foot trailer WB sixty seven. Can traverse the site. Is there are there other? Are there other nuances that I've missed?
No, sir.
In. Okay, okay. As we were talking, I was thinking about it in those terms, and I appreciate you asking me to have an opportunity here to kind of recap that.
You know, not not to cut you off, Mr. Lucas, but our our attorney Nicole Todd is on. I want to recognize her and have her speak on our behalf.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. Member Baker. So I just wanted to jump on. I understand that there has been a lengthy conversation about this application. And I want to apologize for not being here earlier this evening. We're working on getting our seniors registered for vaccine clinics. But I did just want to note a couple of things kind of in my dual capacity, right? So first and foremost, I just want to note that this application has undergone significant review. In addition to the peer review that I know I just came in on, but also from a legal perspective with my office Assistant Town Solicitor. Huff has worked closely with the team to review the application and review the project and make sure it meets all necessary parameters. From a legal perspective. But additionally, in speaking to the mayor, you know, he is also familiar with the project. He has reviewed the plan. He has been briefed. By Acting Director Santucci Razi about the current nature. And, you know, appreciating that this site needs to be cleaned up. This is an opportunity to do that. It's an opportunity that serves the neighborhood positively. And that he has no objection to the plan as presented this evening and frankly, would really like. We would like to see this move along. It's been outstanding for quite some time. I think the applicants have done everything requested of them. By this board and from the legal review that was done by my office. And so I wanted to jump on to just share that so that you heard it from me directly. I know interim. Director Santucci Rossi has has relayed the same. But I think at this point, there is a really strong need to keep this project and keep this application moving. With a vote this evening and any concerns perhaps can be addressed through further conditions, which may or may not have been discussed before I got on here. So thank you very much, Member Baker. For the opportunity to speak and for recognizing me this evening before the board.
Thank you. Member Grove, any other additional comments?
Ms. Todd, how how do you vote it? Vote it with conditions unless you have some condition that allows you to cut back? And look at this. Well, you have any suggestions?
You know, I certainly would defer to Acting Director Santucci Razi on what conditions would be appropriate here. But as I understand it, and as as what we've seen on the application, the issues have been. Been substantially addressed at this point. And so, you know, I I don't have the benefit of what the board has before them this evening. So I would ask interim director Santucci Rossi to jump in at any moment, but. As I mentioned, based on the legal review of this project at this point, there was no objection to moving forward. It's all of the concerns seem to have been addressed at this point.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Nicole, for um, deferring to me. So. I think there's two issues. Is there? If there's an I I, as I had mentioned before, I would I would caution the board on restricting truck traffic on the public streets. Again, this has not come up. That is something. A truck commercial ban is something that needs to be vetted and discussed respectfully far beyond far beyond the planning board. I think there's been testimony this evening that. There's activity similar in the area, and there's also tons of activity happening. On the site, and that could continue to happen in absence of of this approval. The applicant is spending millions and, you know, tens of millions of dollars cleaning up, purchasing the site. Cleaning up this site and developing this site. I don't think that they're going to bring in trucks and start driving over their curbing. And driving over parking areas and just again, why would they bring a truck? Onto the site that doesn't that that's going to destroy the infrastructure that they have spent the money on. The the loading areas are designed in accordance with the bylaw, and what I wanted to follow up. Quickly with Chi is. I'm just looking at one of the smaller plans. We have the loading bay and then between the end of the bay and the curb line. Is probably the same distance. That the depth of the bay is. So there's there's a lot of room there. They've cut out into the they've made like a little bump out. In the loading area as well to accommodate the circulation. And again, just for the record, I strongly discourage the board from from conditioning the use of the public streets.
Thank you, Melissa. Any more comments or questions?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I believe you only have four members that have participated in all the hearings.
I think that is correct. As member Kent, I think, missed one or two of the meetings, Melissa.
All the members that are eligible are Chairman Baker, are Member Grove, Member Downey, Member Bakami, and and yourself. Uh, the members that are eligible are Chairman Baker, are uh, Member Grove, Member Downey, Member Bakami and, and yourself.
Okay, so four of the five.
And I, I still have a motion before the board.
Yeah, I, I have a motion myself as well.
Okay.
Um, so looking at Member Grove's motion, uh, if you could repeat the motion uh, to the board, just for clarification, since it's been a bit.
My motion is just to continue the hearing until the next meeting.
Is there a second on continuing the uh, hearing to the next meeting? I don't have a second on that. Um. So my motion uh, was to. Approve, uh, make a motion to approve with the draft conditions, uh, and with the submission of the final set of plans that addresses the staff revisions. As well as the peer review revisions. Uh, and I think uh, Attorney Pramuj has not um, given us a, a answer yet on whether you want the extension for fourteen or thirty days. Um, so if you can give me a clarification, I could make the motion uh, to, to uh, go around that item.
Sure, uh, we, we'd like the thirty days, but uh, it would be our goal to have it done within fourteen.
Okay, um, so I'll, I'll, I'll correct my motion uh, that the decision will be filed in thirty days, um, just to give a little extra buffer. That's okay.
Yeah, we can always do less, just in, just in the event that um. Um. They need some additional time. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I, I think you have to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, I have to call close the public. By a roll call though.
The chairman question again.
Excuse me?
Are we amending a special permit?
Uh, Melissa, I don't think we are.
Says amended special permits and site plan review.
Oh, it says amended because um. When Counselor Pamucci originally filed, we didn't include the two-family house. And then he amended the application to include. Uh, the two family, cause that's where they're gonna have the parking for the riverwalk, the compensatory storage. So. Um, it's, it's not an existing special permit that will be amended. The application was filed and amended to include uh, eight to ten Arnold Street.
Okay. And Ms. Santucci, how many votes to pass for a spread for your site plan?
Uh, the site plan review and the special permit both require four votes.
Okay, thank you.
Judge, do you have a roll call vote to close the public hearing, Melissa?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, I want to close public hearing. Um, Member Makami.
Let's, can we get a motion?
Oh, sorry, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
A move to uh, close the public hearing.
I have a second.
Second by Downey.
Second by Member Downey, uh, motion made by Mayor Makami, uh, roll call vote, Mayor Makami.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Uh, Member Kent. Member Grove.
No.
I, uh, if I may, um, Member Grove. Member Baker is leaving the board. This is his last meeting. This project, this project has been in permitting and in discussions with the town for five years. I respectfully request the hearing is closed this evening and we move forward. We have twenty-five pages of conditions. It's a by right use.
Since if you put in a condition that allows us to. Receive data on revised turning. Layouts. From the applicant. And to deal appropriately with them.
I think they already, didn't she say he was gonna provide those?
What I'm, what I'm saying is. Is if he can't make it work, we gotta have something to go back. So we need a condition.
May, may I? I, I, may I um, suggest a, a potential condition could be. Uh, that we're capped to the, I, I don't know how long tractor trailers are, but the forty-two, forty-eight, whatever it is. Uh, until we can um, get approval from the town engineer. By updating our turning radius that uh, we have sufficient room to accommodate a fifty-three foot. Tractor trailer.
Okay, up, up to forty-five because that's what you're. Oh yeah, you were forty-two and a half, yeah. Okay, that's fine by me, Melissa.
So it, it actually, it won't be, we don't need it as, as a condition. That's gonna be provided. She's gonna probably run the templates tomorrow. He's gonna send them over. I'm gonna send them to Greg. I'm gonna send them to Jim and John and DPW. And, and, and if it demonstrates it works, it works. If it doesn't. Then again, if they're driving over islands and over parking spaces, that, that's. They're not gonna bring them in. They, they can't. It's like a self-enforcing situation. Based on geometry, I would.
Can I ask a clarification? Well, um, Melissa and Mr. Chairman, Sean Hardy. Um. I mean, we're, we're intending to have. A pavement design that meets. What would be allowed to drive over the roadway. And we are intending to have a pavement design that would. Allow for those same vehicles on any given roadway. So I, I'm, I'm a little confused on what the. Question is, I mean, we're, we're intending to provide. Along Arnold Street and into the park, in, into the property. What would be allowed to travel on a roadway? And that's what Mr. Mr. Man described as a heavy, heavy duty pavement.
The weight is not a concern at this point. The weight is not the concern. The concern is getting off of Arnold Street on. Uh, off of Adams rather, on, on Oldham and vice versa. Now, you, you're, all your, all your turning radius. Designs have been predicated on a forty-two and a half foot trailer. But now you want a fifty-three foot. Unless you can prove it.
So you're asking for a turning radius, not a pavement design. That, that, that helps us. We will provide that. Thank you.
Can I make, can I make a suggestion that perhaps that the condition read to the effect uh. That was provided by Attorney Pal Mucci, that um, approval shall be granted for a forty-five foot turning radius. Uh, pending receipt of documentation to support a fifty. Uh, fifty-four foot turning radius.
Yeah.
And leave it at that, so that when the documentation comes in, it's automatically adjusted to reflect the longer truck. Uh, but until receipt of such data, it's limited to the truck length of the data that was provided to the board.
Thank you.
Directors, uh, Acting Director Santucci, would something like that work here?
Yeah, that, that's essentially what, what's gonna happen, but it's gonna happen before we file the permit. So it's, it's like not, we'll know before. We don't even need the condition, but I get it. If the, and if there's a problem, that we'll, we're gonna be, we're gonna be addressing it.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nicole.
Okay. So back to the motion then. If that is satisfying you, Member Grove.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so I had a motion um. To approve the. Amended special permanent site and review for uh, planning board filed twenty zero two with the draft conditions. Along with the final set of plans uh, in the uh, thirty day timeline uh, for the decision also with uh, uh. Attorney uh, Tobb's recommendation for the extra condition. Um, and do I have a motion?
Did, did you make?
I, I made a motion, yep, sorry.
All right, well. We've gone through a lot. Um. And uh, I think we've made a lot of progress. So I think we have some. Safety features built in as we progress. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna second the motion.
Okay, and I'll take a. Roll call vote. Um, so Member Makami.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And myself, uh, Member Baker, yes. Anything I missed, uh, Melissa?
No, Member Baker, thank you very much.
No, thank you. Yes.
If I may, um, while I'm here, I'm actually glad I had an opportunity. Um, to, so that I could say thank you. I'm. Understanding that this is your last meeting. Thank you very much for your service to the town and for the service to the board. Uh, it has been really great to work with you. You've been an excellent addition. Uh, to this group and to the discussion and to the review of all of the applications. So on behalf of the mayor's office. I just want to extend our thanks and gratitude for all of your contributions during the course of your service. So truly, thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. I've uh, I've had a blast doing it. Um, it, it was very enjoyable. I learned a lot. Uh, of being on the board. I, I got a lot of friends out of this as well. So it was a win-win. Uh, I'm gonna miss everybody and I, I think this is just more of the, a stepping stone for me. I'm hoping to potentially be back in, in years prior. I, I spoke to Melissa a while back and uh, this is just short term. Hopefully, I, I, I definitely want to be back on the board. Just been. A, a lot of moving parts right now in my life. So hopefully uh, everything will be much better in the, in the coming years, so.
Great, we'll definitely keep our number. You know where to find us.
Of course, yeah, I'll be back.
Thank you, Member Baker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one more motion.
Yep. Can I get a motion to uh, uh, end the meeting?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Mayor Makami.
Yes.
Member Downey.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Great job.
Good luck, Phil.
Yeah, thank you.
See you in the neighborhood.
Yeah.